We will call to order the common council meeting of Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021. And I will ask the clerk to call the roll. You all should be able to unmute yourselves.
Alder Bedar.
Present.
Alder Bedar is present. President Carter.
Present.
President Carter is present. Alder Evers.
Here.
Alder Evers is present. Alder Foster.
Here.
Alder Foster is present. Alder Furman.
Present.
Alder Furman is present. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Present and pleased to answer the roll.
Alder Harrington McKinney is present and very welcome. Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Heck is present. Alder Hennick.
Present.
Alder Hennick is present. Alder Campbell.
Here.
Alder Campbell is present. Alder Lemer.
Here.
Alder Lemer is present. Alder Martin.
Here.
Alder Martin is present. Alder Prestagiacomo.
Here.
Alder Prestagiacomo is present. Alder Rumel is excused. Alder Skidmore.
Here.
Alder Skidmore is present. Alder Tierney.
Here.
Alder Tierney is present. Alder Verveer.
Here.
Alder Verveer is present. Alder Wihelia.
Here.
Alder Wihelia is present. Vice President Abbas.
Present.
Vice President Abbas is present. Alder Alboroz.
Here.
Alder Alboroz is present. Alder Balde.
Yes.
Alder Balde is present. We have quorum.
Thank you. Can I ask staff to please resend the link to Rick Ransom, who's one of our registrants tonight, please? And then can I ask staff to read the meeting instructions?
Yes, welcome to our virtual meeting. We are going to cover a few basic items before beginning. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. To members and city staff, members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. Council members are responsible for muting and unmuting themselves. Please mute yourself when you are not speaking to avoid background noise. Use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. During any roll call, all panelists will be unmuted briefly. Staff, click raise hand when you are asked a question. The chair will do their best to call on committee members in the order in which hands are raised. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the board, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And we have a few opening remarks, but I want to just start our meeting again with a reminder to both the body and the members of the public wishing to testify this evening that we are trying to really maintain a sense of civility and compassion in our meetings. And so I'd ask folks to be hard on systems and easy on people and to refrain from using profanity in these meetings, whether that's members of the body, again, or folks here from the public that are testifying. We're here trying to do our best for the city of Madison and appreciate people taking that into account. And then also, under opening remarks, is item one, the introduction of our new chief of police, Chief Sean Barnes, who is here with us tonight. Chief, would you like to please introduce yourself and say a few words to the council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. As you know, my name is Sean Barnes, and I have the pleasure of being the 30th Chief of Police for what I think is the greatest city in America, the Madison, Wisconsin city. I am certainly excited about this opportunity, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you, learning about your particular areas and areas of concern. I hope that you will be willing to work with me as we move our police department forward. As I shared earlier, I require your support, I require your advice, and I also require your criticism in order to grow this police department. I thank you for the opportunity to lead, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Barnes, and welcome again to the city of Madison. And I'm sure that each of the alders will have the opportunity to meet with you going forward and to share their thoughts and concerns, and I invite all of you to take advantage of that opportunity. Right, that will bring us to item number two, which is legis-- excuse me, no. We need to suspend the rules. First, President Carter.
Suspension of the rules, 2.04 Order of Business, 2.05 Introduction of Business, 2.24 Ordinances, and 2.25 Resolutions for items designated on the agenda.
That's a motion and--
Second.
A second to suspend the rules. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of suspension of the rules? Seeing no objection, those rules are suspended. And now we will move on to item number two, which is Legis 63929, recognizing February 2021 as Black History Month in the city of Madison. And President Carter, are we-- who's starting reading?
Starting out with Nora Davis.
All right, Mr. Davis, if you would raise your hand. So there you are. Thank you. Go ahead.
Right. Thank you. I appreciate this, Madam Mayor and President Carter, for the honor of helping the resolution. The resolution reads, recognizing February 2021 as Black History Month in the city of Madison, whereas to commemorate and celebrate the contributions to our nation made by people of African descent, American historian Carter G. Woodson established Black History Week, then called Negro History Week, nearly a century ago. And whereas the event was first celebrated during the second week of February 1926, selected because it coincides with the birthdays of both Abraham Lincoln, February 12th, and abolitionist writer Frederick Douglass, February 14th. And whereas that week would continue to be set aside for the event until 1976, when, as part of the nation's bicentennial, it was expanded to a month. And whereas February 2021 Black History Month's theme is the Black family, representation, identity, and diversity, returning to its roots with a new focus on Black family ties. And whereas the theme for 2021 explores the wide-ranging diversity of Black family life, from single to two-parent households to nuclear, extended, and more recently, bi-- And whereas throughout Black history, factors such as slavery, inequality, and poverty have put pressure on maintaining family ties when a better life meant are from home, as evidenced in 1848. And--
And whereas, when Wisconsin became a state, Black families started to arrive in Madison as free individuals looking for the pursuit of economic opportunity and a new life. And whereas, this may certainly be the reason why family reunions have always remained popular within the African-American community, as members of far-flung relations take place each year with a joyful exchange of memories, photos, and storytelling. And whereas, economic pressures that may pull Black families apart also often unite them against prejudice and bigotry. And many families may pool resources, or find job opportunities, or simply find emotional comfort within their own micro-community. In that respect, brothers or aunties may be good friends or neighbors who simply qualify for the title. And whereas, many Black families have strong roots in the Madison community that exhibits an unwavering understanding of the value of family as it is incomparable source of comfort, strength, and even survival. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the Madison Common Council recognizes February 2021 as Black History Month in the city of Madison, and be it further resolved that the city encourages the celebration of this month by inviting all residents in the city to learn more about the African-American family history, to better understand the experiences of African-Americans and how they shape our nation.
Thank you, President Carter. We'll take that as a motion. And is there a second? Vice President Abbas is frozen. Can we get another second? Alder Balde will second. Thank you. Is there any discussion or any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item number two and move on to item number three, which is Legis 63931, expressing sincere appreciation to Madison Police Department Assistant Chief Victor Wall for his years of dedicated service and 16 months' service as acting chief of police. Alder Skidmore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas Victor, Vic Wall, first joined the Madison Police Department as an officer in 1991. And whereas now Assistant Chief Wall has served in many capacities within the MPD to include the promoted positions of sergeant, beginning in 1999, lieutenant, beginning in 2002, captain, beginning in 2008, and assistant chief, beginning in 2017. And whereas, on September 30th, 2019, former Madison Police Department Chief Mike Kovall retired. And whereas Assistant Chief Vic Wall immediately and voluntarily assumed the role of acting chief of police while a search process for a permanent chief was started by the PFC. And whereas, as acting chief, Assistant Chief Wall led the MPD with distinction, dedication, and steady, calm leadership through some of the most difficult circumstances faced by the Madison community and the Madison Police Department. And whereas, as acting chief, while he was navigating and leading the MPD through the COVID-19 pandemic, periods of civil unrest, ongoing difficult but critical community conversations about the role of police in our community, and an incredibly difficult budget process, he was also continuously preparing the department for an important transition to Chief Sean Barnes. And whereas, during the past 16 months under his leadership, the MPD continued to lead in efforts to reduce reliance on the criminal justice system, implement and improve restorative justice initiatives, and hire and promote women and people of color. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and common council of the city of Madison express their sincere appreciation to Madison Police Department Assistant Chief Vic Wall for his years of dedicated service, and in particular, for the past 16 months as MPD's acting chief of police during these unprecedented times and this important time of transition.
Thank you, Alder. I believe that is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
So it's moved and seconded. Probably good to hear this. Assistant Chief Wall, would you like to speak to the resolution?
Well, I appreciate the acknowledgements, and it's been a real privilege to serve as acting chief the past 16 months. And I'm certainly looking forward to staying on and helping Chief Barnes as he transitions to take the helm of the department. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Alder Skidmore.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Acting Chief and Assistant Chief Wall for all of the service over the last 16 months. I know I appreciated it. The people that served under you did, and we're all very grateful for it. And I would like to personally say that it's been my honor and pleasure to have worked with you since about 2006, I believe, is when you started as Lieutenant of Police in the West District. I believe it was under Captain Davenport at that time, who went on to become an assistant chief as well. So I have very fond memories of working with you, and I look forward to more. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Alder Skidmore. We also have three registrants wishing to speak on this item, starting with Captain Joe Ballas, retired of Linfield Road, representing the Madison Community Policing Foundation, to be followed by Bonnie Rowe.
Good evening, Mayor Rhodes Conway. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Rhodes Conway, and distinguished members of the Madison Common Council. My name is Joe Ballas, retired captain from MPD and the current chair of the Madison Community Policing Foundation. On behalf of our MCPF Board of Directors, retired detective Sherri Walter Twing, retired Officer Jean Papalia, retired investigator Pia Kenny James, retired Sergeant Peachment, we would like to extend sincere congratulations and thank you to Victor Wall for these past 16 months as MPD interim police chief. Vic was probably surprised as anyone by the sudden retirement of Chief Kovall in September 2019 and his promotion to interim chief of police. Nonetheless, Vic used nearly 30 years of selfless dedicated service to MPD to step up to the challenge, assume the department's top position, and lead MPD through one of its most challenging years ever. We heard Vic say in a recent interview with media that the past year felt like a decade. Well, Vic, I think it felt like that to a lot of us, but you served most definitely. Despite the COVID-19 pandemic and a summer of civic protests around police officer conduct here at home in Madison and across the country, the Madison Community Policing Foundation worked with Vic Chief Wall and his staff in the past year to find opportunities where we could support the MPD's community policing efforts, grow wherever possible the relationship between the police and the community. Vic has always been a strong supporter of community policing and MPD's community policing legacy. In fact, as a young 20-year-old something student, Chief Wall was an intern assigned to me when I worked as a Broadway Simpson neighborhood officer from 1989 to 1993. Vic learned about the role of community and policing in those days down on Broadway Simpson. As we have all now watched through his actions this past year, Chief Wall has demonstrated great depth, understanding, and appreciation for the complex and delicate relationship between police and community, a relationship Chief Wall knows that must be both trust-based and transparent in a free and open democratic society. In conclusion, we would like to commend the City of Madison Police Fire Commission on a selection of Dr. Barnes as the MPD's next police chief. We know Vic and the entire MPD command staff team will be a tremendous resource for Chief Barnes as we hope for a seamless leadership transition in the weeks and months ahead. We again thank Vic for his professionalism, selflessness, and dedicated service these past 16 months. MCPF looks forward to working closely with Chief Barnes and his administration as we all work to grow the relationship between the MPD and all residents living and working in Madison, throughout the city of Madison. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Bonnie Rowe of Somerset Lane, to be followed by Joel Despain.
Assistant Chief Wall, it is a rare person who will immediately rise to a challenge they never aspired to, and then excel at it for 16 difficult months. Through it all, your leadership has been steady. I will never forget your words after some very crushing homicides in our city this past year. You got behind a camera time and again, and with a calm and confident voice, you didn't only reassure us, but you urged us to action. You challenged us not to think these incidents are normal or acceptable. They are tragic, everyone. While some would say it was targeted, don't worry about it. You saw the value and dignity of every single human life. I bet it's partly what drove you to this profession almost 30 years ago, and why you're still at it today, and why you always conduct yourself, regardless of circumstances, with decency, respect, and fairness to all. Human dignity is one of MPD's many core values that you have lived out so well and visibly since serving as our chief of police. You're a model of integrity in a dark and really unimaginable moment of time. Day after difficult day, you showed up to work as our chief despite being a lightning rod for all the pent-up pain and nationwide injustice and anti-police sentiment. You engaged respectfully with those voicing their frustration with law enforcement in the streets. You carefully perceived how to maintain that delicate balance of protecting First Amendment rights and your duty to maintain public safety. You held an exceptional yet strained department together under the most challenging time, even for those in the profession of law enforcement. You engaged with the public in community meetings to address rising violent crime and other important concerns. You've been the voice of reason and compassion at a polarized time. I know your work continues on, helping to make Chief Barnes' transition as smooth and seamless as possible. I hope after that, you will have a nice, long, very well-deserved vacation, and then go back to the critical role you didn't aspire to leave in the first place, that of the chief's right-hand man, providing critical support and time-honed expertise of your department and our community. Your work is top-notch, from writing excellent, thorough, and accurate reports to giving presentations like you did at a pretty recent PSRC meeting. Your knowledge of the law and vast practices of policing and your budget expertise are so important. So on behalf of myself and countless other Madison residents, I want to say thank you, Assistant Chief Wall, for being another strong link in the chain that is the legacy of our MPD. Thank you for surpassing all expectations and for your beyond competent and committed leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Joel Despain of Old Middleton Road.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. It is truly an honor to do so, as we mark the end of an unprecedented stretch of Madison Police Department history by thanking a man who never aspired, as we just heard, to be the chief, yet courageously led the MPD through some of its toughest days ever. Until last month, I worked side by side with Vic Wall as the department's PIO. I saw firsthand Vic Wall's dedication to both this community and to the men and women of the department. He faced extraordinary internal and external pressures and was often wedged in no-win scenarios, always looking for the best way to thread the proverbial needle, always with an eye on protecting this beautiful city and all of those who call it home, always wanting to reach out across the aisle and try to work with our communities that are made of very diverse constituencies, always trying to look out for the best interests of the men and women of the MPD. I never saw Vic Wall get angry. I never saw Vic Wall complain. I only saw an extremely dedicated and bright public servant, giving it his all every day, seven days a week, always showing restraint, always quickly analyzing best next steps. I was with him when he took a knee with Black leaders at the Boys and Girls Club. He marched in the streets in solidarity with the Black Lives Matter movement. He went into the streets when protest organizers called him out, wanting to talk. I remember after the firebombing at City Hall, with their offices boarded up, looking at the photographs of all Madison police chiefs going back into the 1800s. They're mounted on a wall just outside of the chief's office. I looked at the wall. I looked at Chief Wall, and I said, "Well, look at that, Vic. You've made the wall." Vic replied without hesitation, "It was never a goal to be on the wall." No, it was not, but Chief Wall has certainly earned his place in MPD leadership history. I know Chief Barnes will appreciate having him nearby. Welcome back, Vic, to what will hopefully be a less stressful world as you slide back into the role of Assistant Chief. It was indeed a pleasure and an honor to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have one registrant available to answer questions, Joseph Keys of Regent Street. Are there questions for any of our registrants? Alder Hennick, not a question. All right, then Alder Hennick.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to echo the accolades that have been spoken in Vic's favor. The one thing that I always admired about Assistant Chief Wall is that he always sought to understand before being understood. I heard him be one of the best listeners that I've ever met, and I really appreciate that about him. So thank you very much for your service and really appreciate all you did for the city.
Thank you, Alder.
I would like to say something.
President Carter.
Thank you. I started to call you Chief Wall, Assistant Chief Wall. I just want to also say that working with you these last months has been very rewarding. And I have to echo the fact that you have always, not only taken my call, but always able to explain things in details on why your position is this or that. And I really appreciate it, and I also appreciate the fact that you were willing to meet and talk at different times of the-- of day and night. And I'm glad-- of the, of day and night. And I'm glad you're still going to be with us, and I just wanted you to know that I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, President Carter. Alder Harrington McKinney. Alder, you're muted. Alder, you should have a prompt to unmute yourself.
All right, it's there.
There you go.
I would not, I would not let this opportunity to go by without acknowledging Vic Wall. I knew Vic Wall as captain of the West District, and I saw how he operated, so it was no surprise to me how he rose to the occasion as chief. Chief, I want you to know that you are unparalleled in your integrity, your humanity, and also in your caring, and that's one of the things that I want you to know, that I recognize. I thank you for the opportunity to serve with you. And I say "serve with you" because that's exactly what we, we do in our position and in your position. I wish you well. You led the city, as the mayor said, through some very, very difficult times, and you had your head up, even when there were times when others were running the other way, you stood face-to-face. And so, I am grateful for you. I am grateful for even being here, and I'll take this opportunity for personal privilege to thank the many of you who sent cards and well wishes to me during my, my heart surgery. I am humbled just to be in this place today and to be able to say thank you, Chief Wall, for a job well-done.
Thank you, Alder, and I'm sure that I speak for the whole council when I say that I'm very happy that you are here with us tonight. All right, I have no other Alders in the queue. So, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the resolution? Seeing no objection, that vote is recorded, and we will move on to item number four. Item number four is Legisstar 63933, honoring our public health and healthcare heroes. And I am happy to read this resolution today. And before doing so, I want to welcome our healthcare partners who are joining us, including Damon Boatwright, who is the SSM Health Wisconsin Regional President, Frederick or Rick Ransom, the Regional Vice President and President of UW Hospitals, and James Arnett of Unity Point Health Meritor, who is the chief operating officer. And last, but certainly not least, our own Janelle Heinrich, who has led the city and county public health response over the very long and difficult year that we just came through. So, now I'll read the resolution. Whereas COVID-19, or SARS-CoV-2, is an illness caused by a virus that can transmit from person to person and has spread across the world, creating a global pandemic that is having catastrophic impacts on human life, our community, and our economy. And whereas, the United States recorded its first resident diagnosed with COVID-19 on January 21, 2020, and subsequently lost more people than were lost during World War II. And whereas, Madison confirmed its first case of the virus on February 5, 2020. And whereas, in the absence of sustained federal leadership, local public health officials, including Public Health Madison Dane County, took bold actions to protect residents from the virus, including moving swiftly to create the state's first public health order, creating one of the state's first mask orders, creating a data dashboard to make information easily accessible and transparent to the public, and restructuring agency operations to focus on COVID-19 and prepare the city and county for the battle ahead while maintaining other public health services. And whereas, Public Health Madison and Dane County has doubled its workforce to do outreach and education, contact tracing and case follow-up, make testing accessible to all community members, and develop plans to coordinate and administer vaccine with healthcare partners to all Dane County residents. And whereas, area healthcare workers assumed new roles, developed and implemented new protocols and processes, worked diligently to conserve precious resources, including personal protective equipment, while showing our community compassion through their resilience and ingenuity in the face of uncertainty and high stress. And whereas, in addition to caring for COVID-19 patients, Unity Point Health Meritor modified programs and support to continue safe mental health and substance use programs, expanded childcare services to support other healthcare providers and first responders, and partnered to provide COVID-19 testing to homeless individuals in our community. And whereas, UW Health providers and staff have shown grit, empathy, and true genius in providing care for thousands of COVID-19 patients and support for their loved ones during these most difficult times for our community. Faculty and researchers led the way in identifying new treatments, testing, and vaccines that will shorten the length and impact of the pandemic, while staff and providers have very intentionally devoted time, resources, and support to communities of color disproportionately affected by COVID-19. And whereas, throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, SSM Health providers and staff have shown incredible perseverance, grace, and compassion, while implementing new innovative ways to connect with, care for, and support patients during their hospital stays, implemented new therapies for COVID-19, and mobilized local vaccination efforts for unaffiliated healthcare workers, as well as frontline essential public safety workers. And whereas, Madison's EMTs and paramedics provided a critical service by transporting countless sick individuals to our local hospitals, and many other city departments, including Metro, our Community Development Division, and more, worked to support our healthcare workers by providing needed transportation and childcare. And whereas, healthcare and public health workers and their supporters should be recognized as healthcare heroes for working in positions where they were exposed to the virus, for working countless hours of overtime and making personal as well as professional sacrifices to battle the disease. And whereas, the pandemic has caused untold stress on our healthcare facilities, healthcare workers, public health staff, first responders, and essential workers who have performed courageously and tirelessly during the pandemic. And whereas, in performing their duties, these brave and selfless individuals face a heightened risk of exposure to the virus, and many healthcare professionals, EMTs, and other frontline workers survived the virus. Now, therefore, be it resolved that all who remain safe and healthy owe a debt of gratitude to those whose sacrifices make our health and safety possible. And be it further resolved that the City of Madison offers our deepest appreciation and heartfelt support for the healthcare providers and staff, public health staff, and first responders who are working to keep our communities and our state healthy. And if I can get a quick motion and second, please? President Carter, I believe, is moving.
Yeah, so moved.
Seconded.
And seconded, and I think Mr. Boatwright would like to say a few words on behalf of the healthcare providers being honored here tonight.
I would, and good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. This past year was one no one could have ever predicted. The uncertainties, anxieties, and very real challenges we all faced due to the COVID-19 pandemic were immense. It is a true testament, however, to the determination, resilience, grace, compassion of our community and its healthcare workforce, that our healthcare systems collectively cared for many thousands of COVID-19 patients. Now, we are working together to vaccinate our community as quickly, efficiently, and equitably as possible, proving again that we are always stronger when we work together. And I'm truly grateful to the city for everything that you've done. And then finally, Mayor, let me just say from the bottom of my heart, I actually don't have profanity, as you advised. I actually have profuse, profuse praise and appreciation on behalf of UW Health System, on behalf of Meritor, part of Unity Point Health System, and on behalf of my own organization, SSM Health. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, public health, and thank you, community, for realizing that we are stronger when we are together. And working through this together, we are a better community overall. And so, thank you for all of your work. Thank you for the resolution. We really do appreciate it, and we appreciate you being an advocate for your healthcare community from day one and throughout this entire event.
Thank you very much, Damon, and thank you, Rick and James, for being here with us. I do want to give Janelle Heinrich an opportunity to share any of her thoughts about this really incredible year that she has led through.
Thank you. I will echo largely a lot of the things that Damon already said, but really want to appreciate your recognition of the hard work of our public health team. It's an honor to represent PHMDC, to lead an amazing team of public health professionals, and to work in collaboration with our healthcare partners who are also being recognized tonight. Pre-pandemic, we were a staff of 160. We are now a force of 300, and we're still growing. In the last year, there has not been any member of our PHMDC family who has not been impacted by COVID, whether or not they are working in the COVID response. Staff have been redeployed, taken on new or more responsibilities, usually both new and more, and continue to show up largely virtually to keep Madison and Dane County as safe and healthy as possible. I am humbled by their strength, their resilience, their enthusiasm, and their unwavering commitment to our residents. And in the past year, PHMDC staff have, you know, I can't get away with not talking about some data, so I'm going to throw a little few data points in. In the past year, PHMDC staff have worked alongside our partners in healthcare to administer 919,360 COVID tests to 325,190 people in Dane County. 302,995 of those tests have been administered at the Align Energy Center and other public health sites. Today, along with our healthcare partners, but some of this is public health alone, we are continuing to provide tests, to conduct contact tracing and case follow-up activities, to engage in outreach and education efforts, and so many other activities that have largely become routine in our COVID response, while also working to plan and coordinate with our healthcare partners around COVID vaccination efforts, so that we can collectively administer vaccines as swiftly and efficiently as possible to our, to our, to our Dane County residents. As of February 1, 74,865 doses of vaccine have been administered in Dane County, 9,489 of those at the Align Energy Center site. We are not out of the woods yet. We are stronger together, and we can see the light at the end of the tunnel. Thank you so much for your recognition and support of the work of our team. They're tired, and they are grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to just add that it's, I think it's important, and this is part of why we have this resolution before us tonight, to recognize that it has been a year, and that that has, that year has taken incredible toll, certainly on many people's physical health, but I think also on all of our mental health. And part of healing is to recognize and mark anniversaries and to acknowledge the impact, so that we can become stronger and heal together. So, I'm personally quite grateful to everyone that's being honored tonight for all of the work that you've done to get us through this past year. All right, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor and thank again the folks who joined us tonight for this recognition. We have no petitions or communications on the agenda. We do have early public comment, and so we will start with Gisla Wilson of Morrison, to be followed by Wen Tao Gao. And I'll just remind folks to please indicate what item you're speaking on before you start your comments. Gisla?
Okay. I actually have two items I want to speak on, so I'm hoping I have five minutes. The first thing I'm speaking on is item number 70-something, the Body Camera Feasibility Committee Report. And really what I want to say is, we just have in the news now another report of a child that was pepper sprayed in the face because she was having a mental crisis, and she was only nine years old. She was already in handcuffs, and there were body cameras there. So, we all got to see some distorted picture of what was going on for her without seeing the officer's behavior. And the fact that they had her in handcuffs and still felt they needed to pepper spray her makes me feel like body cameras are the wrong way to go, given the considerable expense. So, really, if you had a choice, given that the majority of errors here in Madison are made regarding mental health and substance abuse issues, I would strongly suggest putting the money of this very expensive project towards working on rerouting 9/11 calls and getting a stronger mental health response unit onboard, either with the police department or on its own, something like Kahoots. So, all the reports that I read, and I've commented several times at these, these Body Camera Feasibility Committee meetings, the cost has been 8% to 10% of the annual police budget. Now, I know Greg has revised the estimate, but that's a lot of money, and with qualified immunity for officers, it's not getting a lot back for your money. The viewpoint is wrong. The perspective is wrong. It's showing the behavior of the people that the police officers are approaching, and very rarely actually showing the, what's happening to elicit that behavior. So, that's number one. I am against Madison investing in body cameras, and I may have to comment on that again. I just don't, I think it's a fool's errand. Item number two, you all got a letter from me a couple of weeks ago regarding the new coronavirus strains. So, B117 from the UK. There is also a variant from South Africa and another variant from Brazil. All of those are more transmissible.
I'm sorry, Gisla, are you speaking on an item on our agenda at this point?
No, this is a general public comments.
No, you're registered under early public comment, which is to speak on items that are on our agenda tonight. And it's actually my error. Item number 78 is only on for introduction, so technically, we are not taking public comment on it tonight.
Well, you heard my comment anyway.
Feel free to continue to email Alders on issues that aren't on the agenda.
I don't want to email. I don't want to stand hours writing an email to you that you don't read.
I'm sorry. We are not able to take public comment that's not on items that are not on the agenda tonight. Thank you. Our next registrant is Wen Tao Gao of West Jody Street, to be followed by Susan Millar. Do we have Wen Tao Gao?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Wen Tao Gao. I'm a resident of Madison and a climate activist with 350 Madison. I am not actually, I'm also not speaking on an item on the agenda, but I just wanted... to-
So I'm sorry, if you're not speaking on an item on the agenda, then you'll need to contact the council via email, please, thank you. The email address is allalders@cityofmadison.com. Our next registrant is Susan Millar of Rowley Ave. Go ahead, Susan.
Susan, you should have a prompt to unmute.
I see it. I also am planning to speak on an item which is not on the agenda, I'm sorry, like Wen Tao, I did not understand that, so I will send my comment to all Alders, thank you.
Thank you very much, Susan. All right, that will take us to the consent agenda. And President Carter?
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda will be moved with the recommended actions listed for each item except: One, items which have registrants wishing to speak; Two, items which require extraordinary roll call vote and are not included on the consent agenda by unanimous consent; Three, items which alderpersons have separated out for discussion, debate purposes; Agenda items 6 through 15 are public hearing items; And item 9, which is a public hearing. The following items are extra-majority items: Item 45; Item 76. Items requested for exclusion are items 43 and items 44. Items introduced from the floor for referral: Legisar 63893. Requested action is to refer to the Sustainable Madison Committee; Legisator 64012. Requested action is to refer to Finance on 28 and Transportation on 210.
All right, there are no additional items with public comment. Are there any additional items that Alders wish to have removed from the consent agenda? Vice President Abbas?
Thank you. And also, there's item file number 55 for reconsideration. I think so, President Carter, I think this is the older file.
Thank you, Vice President Abbas. Yes, we do have three items that are excluded, 43, 44, and 55. Are there any additional items? Are there any disclosures or recusals on any items on the agenda? Alder Bedar?
Thank you, Mayor, this may have been me, I didn't hear legislative file number 63893 for introduction?
Yes, for introduction tonight from the floor, 63893, 64012, and 64017. Thank you, Alder Bedar. Vice President Abbas?
I'll disclose here on file number 50, Agenda item 50, my company is working with Mendel Group and Research Park, and I am not, it is not part of exclusion list, but just want to disclose that.
Thank you, Vice President Abbas. Are there any further disclosures or recusals on tonight's agenda?
Yes, I won't be voting on the man shelter. For full disclosure, I am the president of Porch Lights Board.
Thank you, President Carter, the clerk will note. President Carter, can you give the clerk an agenda item on that?
Yeah, I'll email it to them.
Thank you, so if the clerk would just note, President Carter is abstaining on that item, please. Are there any other disclosures or recusals? Are there any other items for exclusion from the consent agenda? I will note that we do have registrants on item 50, none of whom wish to speak, but Aaron Oliver, who is representing University Research Park, is here in support, available to answer questions, and there are also five residents, registrants in opposition. Are there questions for any of those registrants? Seeing none, then just one more time, items 6 through 15 are public hearing, extra-majority items are 45, 48, and then we have additional recommendation on number 76, which is additional And then we have three introductions from the floor, and excluded from the consent agenda are items 43, 44, and 55. All right, then on the consent agenda, we'll take that as a motion, President Carter, and a second, Vice President Abbas?
Second, please.
Thank you. So the consent agenda has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing none, a unanimous vote on the consent agenda will be recorded, and we will go to our public hearings. All right, item number six is reported of the Alcohol License Review Committee. We will open a public hearing on Legisar 62952, a new license for Mini-Mart. And item number six, we have no registrants, so we will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Move to grant with conditions.
Vice President Abbas?
Second to grant with condition.
Moved and seconded to grant with conditions. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor. That takes us to the report of the Plan Commission, item number seven, which is Legisar 62966. We'll open a public hearing on the substitute creating sections of the MGO to create the regional mixed-use district and amending portions of the MGO to add relevant provisions related to that newly created district. On item number seven, we do have registrants, starting with Dr. Mara Eish of Pontiac Trail in opposition, available to answer questions, and then six additional registrants in opposition not wishing to speak. Are there questions for any of our registrants on item number seven? Seeing none, President, excuse me, we'll close that public hearing, President Carter?
Yes. Excuse me, how to get over here? Recommend to, up to adopt.
Excuse me, second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of adoption of item number seven, and move to item number eight. Item number eight is Legisar 62174. We'll open a public hearing on the substitute creating sections of the MGO to rezone properties at 3614 through 3700 Milwaukee Street and 102 to 122 West Corporate Drive. We do have registrants on item number eight, starting with Robert Proctor of East Mifflin Street in opposition, representing the Realtors Association of South Central Wisconsin Incorporated, to be followed by Nathan Wadier.
I should have a PowerPoint. Thank you. Good evening, I'm Robert Proctor, Government Affairs Director for the Realtors Association. We oppose the proposed rezoning of the Amazon and surrounding properties. More importantly, we oppose the policy to rezone properties to fit future land use plans and thereby create non-conforming uses. This proposed policy will have the unintended consequence of further shifting the property tax burden from commercial property to residential properties. Next slide, please. The total amount of real estate taxes that the city may raise is strictly limited by state law. When a property or a class of properties are able to reduce their assessed values for property taxes, does not change the amount of property taxes that the city may raise. Instead, it shifts the burden, tax prop, the property tax burden, onto other properties such as multifamily residential and single-family homes. Next slide, please. In this case, if the city rezones the Amazon property to a non-conforming use, the property owner will likely argue to the city assessor, and if necessary, the courts, that its assessed value should be significantly reduced. The property owner will win this argument, as it is clear that being a non-conforming use reduces the value of a property. Next slide, please. This will continue the trend started by dark store and Walgreens litigation that has caused residential properties to pay more and more of the property tax burden. As this chart shows, in 1970, businesses and residential properties each paid about 50% of the property tax pie in Wisconsin. In 2018, that changed to residential properties paying more than 67%. This policy that the city is contemplating tonight will further exaggerate that trend in Madison. Next slide, please. Shifting the property tax burden to residential properties will make it more difficult for new home buyers to afford a home. It will cause rent to increase as multiple, multifamily owners pass those costs onto renters. Some will say that this shift will be modest. This type of thinking kills affordable housing. Affordable housing dies a death of a thousand cuts. Every regulatory cost, impact fee, dark store reassessment, interest rate increase, and property tax increase causes affordable housing to slip away. Next slide, please. The rationale for the proposed policy is simple, it's well-intentioned, and at first glance makes some sense. However, it is a monumental shift in policy that will have negative impacts. Every future land use plan will face the same battles between property owners, neighborhood associations, and staff that encountered this contentious rezoning. We do not know of any other municipality in the state that has adopted a policy similar to the policy that you are considering tonight. Creating non-conforming uses is bad policy. Please vote no to the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Nathan Wadier of East Mifflin in opposition, representing Leo Ritter &amp; Company, to be followed by Amy J. Bowman.
Hi, can you bring up my PowerPoint as well? Slide two, please. Thank you. My name is Nathan Wadier, I'm a local land use attorney, and I'd like to provide a brief summary on how the city has historically handled rezonings. As many of you are aware, the city rewrote their entire zoning code about 10 years ago, with the new code becoming effective in January of 2013. This rewrite required every property in the city to be rezoned into a new zoning district. This process looked at the exact issue we're discussing tonight, zoning for existing businesses and their relation to adopted land use plans. That zoning rewrite process, like tonight's rezoning proposal, could have resulted in many non-conforming uses and non-conforming structures throughout our city. However, during that very robust process, the city wisely made a policy decision to try and minimize the creation of non-conformities. This was done primarily to avoid the negative consequences that non-conforming uses can cause for existing businesses. In addition to avoiding negative consequences, the current city policy also provides predictability for landowners investing in and improving their properties. This predictability is of particular importance. When a new project is approved, significant investment is then made and jobs are created. Tonight's proposal is requesting an absolute stop on the policy to minimize the creation of non-conformities. I say absolute because the staff report for this rezoning proposal identified another zoning district that is both consistent with the neighborhood plan and does not make the recently approved Amazon project a non-conforming use. Plan Commission deadlocked 44 on whether to use that compromised district. That deadlock on a compromise is the reason this potential policy change is before you tonight. A policy change that ignores the city's existing practice of minimizing non-conformities when it can. In the case of the Milwaukee Street area plan, this specific rezoning proposal is particularly confusing. The stated intent of the proposal is to conform zoning to the plan's future land use map. However, the Milwaukee Street plan actually has two separate and contradictory future land use maps. While I'm happy to answer questions on this inconsistency, I would like to use the remainder of my time to address the bigger, bigger policy implications of tonight's proposal. To do so, I want to highlight that there are two different zoning concepts at issue tonight, non-conforming uses and non-conforming structures, two different types of non-conformities with two different sets of rules. Creating a non-conforming use is different than creating a non-conforming structure. Rather, rezoning an existing business to make the business non-conforming is very different than making a vacant building non-conforming. It is why rezoning the vacant buildings at Oscar Meyer, to be consistent with that recently adopted plan, and making those vacant buildings non-conforming can be done with minimal impact. But making the operating Amazon business non-conforming will result in significant negative impacts to the recent investments made to that property and to the ongoing viability of the jobs recently created. Beyond the Amazon site, and looking at the city as a whole, if this rezoning is approved in this method of rezoning to intentionally create rather than minimize non-conforming uses becomes the new policy, our collective understanding of neighborhood plans will need to change. On that point, I'm not aware of a single neighborhood plan, including the Milwaukee Street plan or the Oscar Meyer Strategic Area Plan, that makes an explicit recommendation to immediately rezone properties. Immediate rezoning is just not a recommendation that has ever been included in our neighborhood plans, even though some Alders have expressed that desire when voting to adopt them. To put another way, if this new policy is adopted, all stakeholders in the neighborhood planning process will need to understand that when we use the term "future land use map," what we actually mean is new zoning map. Neighborhood plans will no longer be optimistic guides for future development, they will instead become long narrative rezoning plans. Amy Bowman will now provide some background about the business created because of land use approvals granted last spring, land use approvals that tonight's rezoning seeks to reverse less than one year later. I yield my remaining time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Amy Bowman of Patterson Street in opposition, representing Leo Ritter &amp; Company, to be followed by Mike Wittenwiler.
Great, thank you, slide three, please. Hello, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Amy Bowman, Principal at Key Commercial Real Estate in Madison. I'm a CPA and CCIM with expertise in commercial properties in the greater Madison area. Over the recent few years, I've been involved with the properties located at 3618, 3630, and 3650 Milwaukee Street, which consists of the Amazon distribution facility, parking, and vacant land parcel for future affordable housing development. I'd like to share a brief summary of the project and events leading us here tonight, where we are expressing our concern for the damage that this rezoning proposal will do, both to this specific project, as well as to city policy and development more broadly. Next slide. 3650 Milwaukee Street is zoned IL, containing a 228,000-square-foot warehouse occupied by Swiss Colony from 1978 to 2018. After Swiss Colony closed their Madison facility, the property was marketed for lease seeking a new tenant. After a year, a long-term lease was negotiated with Amazon for the use of the facility as a package delivery distribution center. as a package delivery distribution center. The new use and details of that project were shared with city staff. The use of the warehouse was permitted by zoning right, and the adjacent parcel was incorporated for parking. After a long process, appearing both before Plan Commission and City Council, the project approvals were received in early 2020. Significant improvements and investments were made for an adaptive reuse, turning the aging site into a modern facility. This brought stormwater landscaping, building structures, energy efficiencies, and utilities up to current codes, and also included underground conduit to accommodate a future installation for an all-electrical vehicle fleet. Additionally, increased tax base and hundreds of jobs were created during a pandemic. As soon as the project was complete, the district alder put forth an ordinance to rezone the property to intentionally make the Amazon distribution center a non-conforming use. Next slide. The timing of the rezoning proposal, immediately after gaining all necessary entitlements and investing significant funds into the property, is incredibly damaging. In this case, just six months lapsed between gaining those approvals, investing over $2 million, and then a proposal was submitted to rezone the property into this non-conforming use without any discussion or engagement to better resolve all parties' concerns. Next slide. The recently completed Amazon distribution center is zoned IL. The proposal before you is to rezone part of the parcel to TRU1, Traditional Residential Urban, in the back, and TSS, Traditional Shopping Street, in the front. These zoning districts would cause the current use as package delivery to become a non-conforming use, which has many restrictions and negative impacts that truly need to be understood and carefully considered. Next slide. The Milwaukee Street Special Area Plan was drafted during the tenancy transition and the re-leasing of this building. In the plan, a vision for mixed-use commercial and housing was created. There seems to have been very robust community outreach, yet somehow one of the largest property owners was essentially left out of those discussions. The property owners had always maintained that the site was not available for sale and was being marketed for lease, and had related discussions with city staff regarding those permitted uses. Additionally, the draft of the Special Area Plan, as well as the final copy, clearly states that the plan, or that the site can continue to be used for permitted uses in the IL zoning. To quote the plan, "Long viewed as a prime candidate for redevelopment, the now vacant former Swiss Colony warehouse is owned by Leo Ritter Trust. The 15-acre parcel contains a 200,000-square-foot industrial building, which is being marketed for lease to new tenants. The property is zoned IL and could be occupied by any permitted use in that category." Next slide. There is certainly no intent to diminish the valuable time and efforts made by those participating in the Special Area Plan. As illustrated, the Special Area Plan also provided guidance for mixed-use housing development on the vacant neighboring parcel, that we would like to focus our efforts to providing an affordable housing development there. Furthermore, we believe there is a very valid compromise available by which the site could be rezoned to CCT, which keeps the distribution center as a permitted use while also being consistent with the neighborhood plan. The current rezoning ordinance, if adopted--
And that's five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Mike Wittenweiler of East Maine, representing Leo Ritter and Company, to be followed by Louis Weisman.
Good evening. I'm an attorney at Godfrey &amp; Kahn, and appearing tonight on behalf of the property owner Leo Ritter and Company. Anyone who has owned or leased a non-conforming use property will tell you that it creates immediate practical and legal issues. These negative impacts are a reason to vote against the proposed rezoning amendment and creation of a non-conforming use. First, it's punitive to business. Once your property is a non-conforming use, it prohibits you, as a tenant or an owner, from expanding the business at the current site or otherwise improving the property. As a result, it creates disincentives for additional growth and investment in the city of Madison. Moreover, the non-conforming status restricts future use of the facility to only the businesses or tenants' specific current use, for example, package delivery. Second, it diminishes property value. Non-conforming use status limits the ability to maintain buildings as repairs or alterations cannot exceed 50% of the total assessed value. As a result, it provides a property tax challenge for the city of Madison and thereby decreasing the tax base to the city. Third, it destroys marketability. If a building becomes vacant or non-conforming, use of the property ceases for 12 continuous months, the use becomes a prohibited entirely, and the non-conforming status terminates. Accordingly, any property in a non-conforming use status immediately reduces the number of potential tenants and the marketability of the property. Next slide, if you could jump to 11. Sorry, thank you, perfect. Fourth, it creates serious and frequently insurmountable financing issues. Most lenders will require zoning conformance in order to obtain market-rate loans. Non-conforming use status will result in either an inability to get financing entirely or increased interest rates. Non-conforming use status will also likely lead to a reduction in the loan-to-value ratio, a shorter loan duration, and additional guarantee or collateral requirements. Accordingly, a property that becomes a non-conforming use is very difficult to refinance, and in some instances may trigger full repayment or default provisions. Fifth, it creates serious insurance issues. A non-conforming building that is damaged or destroyed is subject to extreme limits on restoring it to its current use. Typically, the building can only be rebuilt under certain limited circumstances. Moreover, the size of the restored building or structure must comply with the applicable building code and safety requirements, which likely is not possible on a rezoned parcel, making the rebuilding of the non-conforming structure an impossibility. In sum, there are a multitude of reasons for the council to maintain the city's current policy of non-conforming uses as disfavored status. The policy was developed over a multi-year process and part of the zoning code rewrite. It respects both existing land use rights and provides predictability for property owners and encourages investment in the city of Madison. In closing, the city should reject the proposed rezoning amendment. Through its significant financial investment last year, Leo Ritter has greatly improved the dilapidated building and eyesore of a property. It made an investment in the city of Madison that attracted an employer to a site that the employer sought out to locate the facility and surrounding municipalities. But this employer chose Madison and is now creating jobs in the city of Madison, not a suburb or neighboring community, and it's using as a draw to the workers at its location that it is located next to one of Madison Metro's four major transfer points. After a recent approval of this use and recognizing the investment made based on these approvals, it's time to focus on the next stages of development in this area. There is a possibility for workforce housing immediately adjacent to the parcel, and now greater development ideas pending with the nearby Voight Farm property. Leo Ritter wants to be part of those conversations and helpful in future plans for investments in this neighborhood. But allowing for this change in the resulting non-conforming use, under the circumstances of a recently approved major tenant and literally millions of dollars invested for this use, creates a dangerous precedent that will undoubtedly become a disincentive to future substantive land and building investments in this neighborhood and in other locations across the city. Accordingly, we ask the council to reject the zoning request and avoid this risky and potentially dangerous precedent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Louis Weisman of Seattle, Washington, in opposition, representing Leo Ritter and Company, to be followed by Chris Schmidt.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Louis Weisman, and I represent Leo Ritter and Company. Tonight, you've heard from a respected group of legal professionals, community leaders, and real estate experts who practice in your community. They've shared their concerns that the actions contemplated tonight will have serious consequences, not only to the existing commercial business operated by Amazon at 3650 Milwaukee Street, but for commercial and residential property owners throughout the city if approved. The willing pursuit and creation of non-conforming uses by the common council ultimately will resolve in a lose-lose scenario for business, property owners, residents, future investment, and future job creation within Madison. These are the elements and the oxygen city economies need today, more than ever, and should not be discouraging this, as this proposal would do. A multimillion-dollar investment was made by Leo Ritter and Amazon to renovate, refit all this blighted property which sat for years on the Madison landscape. That investment was made in full reliance upon the approval granted by the common council. The common council's approval paved the way for a model adaptive reuse of the property and timely creation of over 150 full-time workforce and managerial positions, as well as hundreds of part-time employment opportunities. Amazon is a corporate citizen whose value statement and vision mirrors that of Madison. Amazon seeks inclusion, diversity, environmental sustainability, and a positive impact. Passage of this proposal casts a long and dark shadow of doubt over Amazon's future investment in this facility, creation of an all-electric vehicle delivery fleet, and even its long-term residency within Madison. Does anyone really want to lose this type of corporate citizen? I can assure you that there are many cities in Wisconsin that would greet this tenant and this opportunity with open arms. The Alder's January 31st blog takes none of this into consideration. The comments show a lack of flexibility to adapt to the facts that they exist today post-approval of the Amazon facility and only expresses remorse over what might have been. They have failed to think through the longer-term ramifications in continuing their pursuit of governmental creation of non-conforming uses. These actions display a lack of leadership, legal understanding, and inability to adapt to find common ground that can make all stakeholders winners in the scenario that exists today. Alternatively, we seek a path forward where all stakeholders can be winners, and the vision of the Milwaukee Street SAP are substantially realized. Per the Planning Commission's earlier guidance, the adoption of a CCT zoning designation might accomplish this outcome, and we are willing to entertain this option. The vision of the Milwaukee Street SAP can be realized if the following suggestions can be pursued. First, do not make 3650 Milwaukee a non-conforming use. It does no one any good and sets a very bad precedent in the city of Madison. Second, let's move forward together on the development of a model workforce-affordable housing rental project at 3618. Let's explore combining it with the city-owned strip of land to the west, which is adjacent and aligns with the street layout envisioned in the SAP. The development of this type of location could be the gateway and the catalyst for future development of the Voight Farm. We have put forth the concept of a workforce-affordable housing project that would restrict rents at 80% of AMI and would not require city, state, or federal funds. The continued debate and pursuit of this change in policy is having a chilling effect on private sector's view of investment in Madison as a business-friendly city in which to invest. If this debate continues, or if the proposal is approved, this view will only become worse. Business and industry will not consider investment in new or existing facilities, knowing that this is a possible outcome if they locate in Madison. Madison, like all cities, needs private capital investment, new business growth, and it needs jobs. This is what supports a viable and healthy housing and employment environment. In closing, we want to thank everyone who spoke in opposition to the proposal. On behalf of Leo Ritter and Company, we want to move forward with a more constructive use of everyone's time and creative energy. We see a path that is fair and ends in a win-win scenario versus the outcomes this proposal will bring if approved. We urge the council to vote in strong opposition to the Alder's proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next registrant is former alder Chris Schmidt of O'Dana Road, in opposition, to be followed by Don Millis.
Thank you, Mayor Rose Conway. Please vote no on this rezoning and creation of a non-conforming use in this particular case. If you seek to make a transformational zoning standard after adoption of plans, you really do need to set this explicitly as a policy with this body through due public consideration and prior to the creation of the plans that call for it. It's really, our planning process has really been redesigned in the last decade to make sure expectations are set ahead of time, rather than coming up with new ideas after things have been adjudicated, as this was back in March. I made a rookie mistake in my letter last night, when I said there was a CUP involved in this decision. There isn't. It's an existing structure and use protected by right. But the power, and you have the power to change zoning and create non-conformities without the consent of property owners, unless it's a planned district, and then you do have to have their consent. My overall point remains, though, that despite that error, the way this has been approached is just not good practice, no matter how good the intent. And it's a little hard to say what the results could be in the long term if this becomes practice without a policy discussion. I've participated in multiple planning processes, most intensively in the Midvale Heights-West Marlin Joint Neighborhood Plan that was adopted about 11 years ago, which I was the co-chair and then got to vote for adoption of a few months later. We were, as we were wrapping up that process, Hy-Vee appeared on the scene. They came forward with their proposed store on Whitney Way at Westgate, located on the western end of our planning area. Westgate and its neighbor malls across Whitney Way were recommended to be community-mixed use. We had visions of fairly dense transit-oriented development with heights up to six stories over by where the theater was, and maybe even relocate a transfer point, still kind of want that. The concept was decidedly anti-big-box, anti-large parking lot. But despite its inconsistency with recommendation, we had literally just written, the Joint Steering Committee and many members of the public supported Hy-Vee coming in, supported granting their conditional use permit. It wasn't universal public support, but you know it never is. Had the proposals been put forward a few months later, our plan would have been adopted, and our position would have still been the same. We responded to a change in circumstances, and we actually helped advance the goals of our plan for that site. Hy-Vee ultimately bought all of Westgate and is pursuing redevelopment along the lines of our adopted plan right now. I can say that the previous owner of the mall may not have done that. They had to be kind of strong-armed into going along with the idea that it could be redeveloped as a community-mixed use. There are parallels, so there are parallels between this case and the one before you. In both cases, there were plan recommendations made based on certain assumptions, and we almost immediately saw those assumptions challenged. The Milwaukee Street plan actually does account for that possibility when it puts forward the Woodman's option on the site where Amazon is, because it was under discussion. We also know that, as Ritter just told us, they're looking to do some housing, which would fulfill some of the plan goals on this property. Arguably, the most substantive difference here is not how we handle plans, but rather just how we view Amazon. People love Hy-Vee, and there are some negative associations with Amazon. But I find it hard to argue that this adaptive reuse of a delivery sorting center 600 feet from another delivering sorting center, which is, has a relationship, they have a relationship with each other, is not a benefit to the community. There's multiple benefits there. So I understand the desire to give these, give strength to these recommendations, and this question could very well come back immediately to the west. If you did apply the zoning recommended in the plan, it may cause trouble for the agricultural plus housing option that's being proposed there now. It's not a bad idea. It serves goals of the plan, not in a way envisioned. So existing plans should always inform discussions, but preemptively rezoning without setting a policy for that and setting guidance for that is just not a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Don Millis of East Mifflin, in opposition, representing Leo Ritter and Company, to be followed by Bill Connors.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, President Carter, and members of the council. Good evening. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Reinhardt-Burne of Enduren, representing Leo Ritter and Company tonight. I'm a state and local tax litigator. A significant portion of my practice is representing individuals, businesses, and nonprofits in property tax matters. And by the way, as an aside, I'll tell you that I have long dealt with the city of Madison assessors, and I have found that the Madison assessing staff be professional and responsible, even if I don't always agree with them. My comments tonight will center on the adverse impact that this proposed change will have on the assessed value of this property and other properties in the city if this type of ordinance is adopted elsewhere. As Robert Proctor said at the outset of the public hearing, this ordinance will certainly reduce assessed values of properties that are subject to it. Changing the zoning of a property like this and making the current use a non-conforming use as a practical matter means that once Amazon vacays the premises, the grandfathering protection becomes moot, and the property will not be able to be used for a distribution facility or for any other light industrial use in the future. This is because when an occupant of a property like this-- This is because when an occupant of a property like this vacates, it is rare for another occupant to move in within 12 months. Even if a buyer or a tenant is found in a timely fashion, the time needed to make the necessary changes to accommodate a new occupant will almost always mean that the property will be vacant for more than 12 months. Thus, the current use will no longer be legal. Now, how does this impact value? Well, there are a few ways, and I'll mention just a couple. First, my understanding is that the 2020 assessment of the subject property is about $35 a square foot. Now, I am not in any way suggesting that the assessment of this property should increase by virtue of the presence of Amazon. However, I would be naive if I didn't believe that the assessor's office might take a look at the 2020, 2021 assessment of this property. Now, if we look at sales nationally of warehouses in 2020 where Amazon is a tenant, the sale prices generally are far exceed the current assessment. Again, I'm not suggesting that these properties are comparable or should in any way impact the 2021 assessment of the subject property. But if the ordinance at issue is adopted, clearly these sales could not be used to justify any assessment of the subject property. Those sales would not apply because upon adoption of the ordinance, the highest and best use of the subject property will no longer be as a distribution center or any other industrial use. This is because a crucial element of the highest and best use of a property is that the use must be legal. As a non-conforming use that will effectively become an illegal use upon Amazon's departure, any industrial or distribution use would not be legal. Consequently, the sales of distribution facilities that might arguably justify an assessment will not apply because they have a high, different highest and best use. That is black-letter law in the state of Wisconsin. Now, aside from an assessor looking at the sales of comparable distribution facilities, another way an assessor might justify an assessment of the Amazon property is to look at its income. The property is leased to Amazon. It has an income stream. When looking at a property's income, a crucial factor in the value is the value of the leased property at the end of the lease. This is called the value of the reversion. Upon adoption of the ordinance, the value of the reversion of the Amazon property will not, not only be diminished, it will become negative. Once the property becomes vacant, the improvements will no longer be an asset. They'll be an impediment to future use of the property, and they'll have to be removed in order for the subject property to be used in conformance with the new proposed zoning. In sum, this ordinance, as it affects the subject property and other properties if similar ordinance are enacted elsewhere, will certainly diminish assessed values. Even if the assessor does not recognize this at the outset, I'm sure that there are professionals who do what I do, will be there to help assessors see it that way. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Bill Connors of West Maine in opposition, representing Smart Growth Greater Madison, to be followed by Gary Peterson.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Very good. I'm the Executive Director of Smart Growth Greater Madison. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Smart Growth would not have a position on the proposed ordinance to rezone property along Milwaukee Street if this were a one-and-done situation. But it is our understanding that this proposed rezoning is the first instance of a new city policy under which it will be standard practice for the city government to rezone all property covered by any special area or neighborhood plan. Smart Growth opposes this new policy, and for that reason urges you to vote no on this proposed rezoning. As you have heard, or will hear from other speakers, rezoning properties against the wishes of the owner, property owners, creating legal non-conforming uses will discourage private investment in Madison, but will make it harder for property owners, particularly owners of small commercial properties, to obtain refinancing of their loans, or it'll increase the interest rate on their loans, and they could have difficulty obtaining insurance. This new policy will create hundreds of additional legal non-conforming uses in the city and multiply these negative impacts. In addition, it is fundamentally unfair for the city government to apply this new policy to plans which were adopted in the past. Property owners were aware that in Madison, as is the situation in the vast majority of other communities in the U.S., that special area and neighborhood plans only provide a vision for a desired future state and have no immediate impact. So there was little incentive for property owners to participate in the planning process. Those property owners had no notice that the planning process could result in the rezoning of their properties soon after the plan was completed and adopted. To be fair to owners of small commercial properties, the city government should pursue rezoning of properties to match the plan only in situations where the city government gives notice to property owners at the start of the planning process, that the end result could be rezoning their properties, and of the potential negative impacts of having the city government make their property a legal non-conforming use. The city government needs to do more to warn property owners and encourage them to engage in the planning process. Merely mailing a postcard is not enough. In addition, rezoning properties to match special area and neighborhood plans will speed up the transition of small commercial properties with affordable rents to much larger buildings with expensive rents. This is gentrification applied to small commercial properties. It will make it harder for small, for small businesses, including businesses owned by Black, Indigenous, and people of color, to find space the businesses can afford. Please vote no on this proposed rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Gary Peterson of Marinette Trail in opposition, to be followed by Robert Proctor.
Thank you. My name is Gary Peterson. I am speaking for myself. I'm a long, lifelong resident of Madison, and I only want the best for Madison. I've been a city planning consultant for over 50 years. I wrote many zoning ordinances in the state of Wisconsin, and they're still in, still in effect. Also amended a number of other ones. And one of the things that was most important in doing that was to eliminate non-conforming uses. I also participated in the zoning rewrite that was done here. I think it was mentioned around 2011, 2012. And one of the things we did in that zoning rewrite was we eliminated lots of non-conforming uses, including there was a whole neighborhood that was non-conforming, and that, that got changed to great relief of the property owners. Non-conforming uses are simply very, very bad. One of the things in Madison that got me thinking is, I went to the Black Lives Matter demonstrations, and they woke me up to the very possibility of institutional racism. Thinking first, we don't have any in Madison, but I'm finding we do. And if you adopt this way of doing business, you will be creating institutional racism. And I don't say that lightly. You're talking about taking the plans, two plans, and making them from recommendations to law. And they were written, I believe, with no, no documentation of ALMI input, no documentation of minority input. And when they were done, they were written as an advisory document. They were not written as law. Now, now you're trying to make them the law, and I think that's just extremely bad. We need to eliminate institutional racism. We not, do not need to go out and create it. These neighborhood plans, and I've been, my Hill Farms neighborhood was planned. You know, they're nice, but they certainly weren't done with any idea that they're going to become law, and they certainly were not done with any ALMI income element or, or minority input into them. So please don't approve this very bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Robert Proctor of Mifflin Street in opposition, representing the Realtors Association. I'm sorry, he spoke already. He registered twice. So that is our registrants. We have a number of others registered as not wishing to speak, both in support and in opposition. Are there questions for any of our registrants? Seeing none, then we will, see, President Carter has stepped out. So let's actually get a short briefing from staff before we get a motion, and then we'll proceed. Ms. Stoudt.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. It's good to be here with you this evening. I want to just provide a very quick sort of table setting and visual overview of the area that we're talking about. I'm going to share screen here, and want to thank my colleague, Dan McCullough, for putting this, this visual together earlier today, and I'll walk through it so that you know what you're looking at here. So for orientation, here's, here's Milwaukee Street, running east and west through the map that you're seeing. And what's shown here in the color blocks in the background are the future land uses planned for the Milwaukee Street Special Area Plan area. So right here in this area, this is the Voight Farm today, and it's not in the city of Madison. So you see that it doesn't have any existing zoning, so to speak, because it's, again, it's still in the town of Blooming Grove today. Over here toward the east, this is the site of the Ritter property and the, the Amazon building that you've heard a little bit about this evening. And superimposed on top of this, this map of future land use recommendations, you can see the existing zoning of each property. So here, the, the Amazon building is located in an area that's zoned IL, or limited industrial. Here, just, just to the west of that, is property that's currently zoned for predominantly single-family homes, TRC1, traditional residential consistent 1. And again, further to the west, this is the area that's actually in the town today, so it doesn't have city zoning. And then the next visual that I'm going to show here is the, the zoning that's before you tonight for consideration. And this is a bit different than what you usually see. Usually, you're looking at zoning that's been proposed by the property owner or a developer with a contract to purchase property. This proposed rezoning is one that's initiated by the city, you know, sponsored by Alder Foster, the Alder of the District. And here we see the zoning districts that are most consistent with the recommendations in the adopted plan. So along this Milwaukee Street frontage, in the area that's planned for future mixed use, shown in purple, the zoning district that accompanies that area is the traditional shopping street, or TSS district. And then in the back here to the north, this is the property that's garnered a lot of attention this evening, where the Amazon building currently lies, is proposed for the TRU1, or traditional residential urban 1. And that's a district that allows for multifamily residential buildings, not commercial uses, but, but a fair amount of density of residential development, as would be consistent with the recommendations in the plan. So again, here's the zoning that we have today, the IL, or limited industrial. And then the proposed zoning would be to sort of split that into a mixed use along Milwaukee Street with the higher-density residential district to the north. And I want to mention that this planning process was completed in late 2018 after a robust public engagement process. As you can, as you can visualize likely, those of you that are familiar with this area, no one lives on this side of Milwaukee Street right now. This is the, the Voight Farm property, obviously the industrial site, et cetera. So we weren't working exclusively with folks who already live in the neighborhood, although we certainly engaged very heavily with those who live to the south and west of this area. But the planning process did also include efforts to, to actually seek input from those who were at our east transfer point. And so we would actually do proactive outreach to those who don't live in this area but come through it and are familiar with it. And we did our very best to reach out to a very diverse set of folks to get input on what the future should be for this site. And I think that, you know, as you can see from this map, the recommendations are for mixed use and a lot of residential units. In total, what we see as possible on this north side of Milwaukee Street is about 1,200 new housing units. And so, you know, I think we, we see this as a really great opportunity for, in the long term, for residential development. We certainly recognize that the Amazon building has seen an enormous investment just recently, very recently, and that that use is probably going to be there for, for some time. But I just thought I would provide that overview of the plan area and the, the zoning that is before you tonight. Again, you're looking at a pretty discreet rezoning. This is not a broad citywide policy that's before you tonight. And the zoning that has been proposed by the Alder, I believe, is the zoning that best fits the recommendations in the adopted plan. And I'm happy to answer questions about nuances and other districts that, that might be utilized, that might be more of a compromise. I won't go into detail about those now, but happy to answer questions as they come up. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to John Strange to provide a little bit more overview of some of the, some of the legal framework.
Thanks, Heather. So just, just to clarify, there were several, several lawyers who spoke tonight in opposition and raised a lot of different questions about non-conformities and other, other, other legal terms. And so I just wanted to sort of set the legal framework here. This is still, this is a zoning map amendment, subject to the legislature's discretion. So just like any other zoning map amendment that you see, this, this is similar to that in terms of what you can and can't do. And, and what's being proposed today is, is legal to do. So there's lots of things like non-conformities that you can ask questions about, and we can have discussions about that. But really, this is a policy issue in terms of this particular legislative decision. And, and your, your, your role is to act on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. I did want to just give some background, because over the course of the years that I've handled the zoning and planning for the city, I've received several questions from Alders, both past and present, about the interaction between plans and the zoning code. And sometimes frustrations of when we put in time and effort into plans, and then those are considered to be guides. And as you know, we have the, the comprehensive plan that's done every 10 years. And then with the city, we have neighborhood and special area plans, and we incorporate those into our comprehensive plan so that as development comes along, we look to those plans as guides for how we do rezonings, conditional uses, and another development as, as it goes along. One of the frustrations that pops up on behalf of Alders from time to time is when something that people really like in a plan doesn't, doesn't get, get executed because it's not necessarily in line with zoning and something else happens. And one of the things that we have to sort of explain is that if, if something that's in a plan that you really like, the best way to make sure that it happens is to put it into law. So this idea of, of, of taking, of proactively rezoning properties that's been talked about tonight is one tool that the city has to do that. And it's, as I've said, it's within your legislative discretion to decide to do that tonight with respect to this particular rezoning, or with respect to any future rezonings. And I don't think that there are any, any significant legal issues that, that come up. I think that they are primarily policy.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff? Alder Bedar.
Thank you, Mayor. So either for Heather or Attorney Strange, have, have we done this, something similar to this before that you can recall?
I'll, I'll start that. I, you know, I think that the city has proactively rezoned individual properties. One example recently in District 13 was the Truman Olsen site, which we owned and were positioning for, for redevelopment. That was one where the city proactive- and were positioning for redevelopment. That was one where the city proactively rezoned from one mixed-use district to another in order to achieve the level of intensity that we wanted to see on that property. So that was on South Park Street. But something like this, where the rezoning is creating a nonconforming use, particularly in a case where there's been such a recent, very significant investment, I can't think of any example where this has occurred to date in Madison. And at least within my time in the city, and I'll look at other colleagues if there's any institutional memory of anything like it.
And with the example that you provided, that happened during the process of thinking about a redevelopment for that site, for Truman Olsen?
Yes.
The city owned the property until it was during the process of thinking about how to redevelop that site, correct?
That's correct.
And then I have one other question. You mentioned that, you know, there potentially are other ideas. And I know that that Plan Commission, there was a conversation about the CCT zoning for just the current Amazon property. So could you tell us more about what that zoning would do to use of that property?
Yes. I'm going to share screen again, just to show this, so we can all follow together here. So right here, you see this area is all proposed for TRU-1. You know, one option would be to, you know, completely start over and sort of take this back to square one, and find a portion of this property surrounding the Amazon Building, and actually rezone it to a different district. And you mentioned the CCT district, the Commercial Corridor Transitional. That would be a district that could both allow for the existing package delivery use, and could also allow for multifamily residential development, so that, you know, in the long term, if this use were to go away, you know, the site could be, well, it might be rezoned to something different, but CCT could accommodate residential. Now, one thing that that would not do is that, you know, it would not make the existing use a nonconforming use. And so one of the thoughts is, well, maybe that would be signaling that this use could just stay for the long term. And so I just want to mention that, that it would have a different impact. Another option could be for the council to decide that, just to keep this area right around the building zoned IL, like it is today, so simply not to rezone that portion of the property at all. And that is an option before you this evening. And again, I think the proposed zoning at the recommendation of the sponsoring Alder is really the districts that sort of best match the plan recommendations.
All right. Any further questions, Alder Bedar? Alder Balday.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a couple of questions for Heather, but I also have one question for Gary, who testified earlier. Will there be a time for that, or this is the time for all of that?
Alder, I did ask for questions for registrants.
Oh, you did?
Already, before we went into the staff presentation.
Okay. I thought Sarah was away, so you went straight to staff, but that's fine. So Heather, I think we just approved this zoning for Amazon, maybe about, you know, a few months ago, or about a year or so, if I can remember the date. But why is it that this rezoning did not come along with that zoning at the time?
So the site that Amazon is located at now has long been zoned industrial limited, or IL. That's been the zoning, you know, for decades, I would guess. Even in the past iterations of the zoning code, the site has been zoned industrial. So when we adopted the Milwaukee Street Special Area Plan in late 2018, there were no measures taken at that time to rezone the property to anything different. Instead, the plan was adopted with a future land use recommendation, sort of setting an aspiration for what could be in the future. When the Plan Commission saw the Amazon proposal recently, last year, actually, there was no rezoning involved at all, nor were there any conditional use permits involved. In fact, the investment that we've seen on that site moved forward as a permitted use in the IL district. The reason that it came back before Plan Commission was a little nuanced. It had been approved years earlier for demolition of a building that had been on the property. And one of the stipulations at that time that the Plan Commission placed on that approval was that anytime there was a future use proposed on that site, it needed to come back to the Plan Commission for their review in order to move forward. So even though the new use was a permitted use in the underlying zoning district, the fact that the Plan Commission had placed that stipulation on it years ago brought it back before them for consideration.
So can you go back to the map or the rendering that you were talking of, please? So in front of the building, between Milwaukee and Milwaukee Street and the building, is zone community mixed use? Is that correct?
The existing zoning map is shown here. So here's the transfer point.
Yes.
It's all zoned industrial limited today, from the back all the way to Milwaukee Street. But the proposed zoning, which I'll switch to now, would be to rezone this frontage along Milwaukee Street to the traditional shopping street district, and that's one of our mixed-use districts. And then behind this red line, or here to the north, the proposed zoning is for multifamily residential.
Okay. So is it realistic that we can build between the Amazon Building, where it is right now, and Milwaukee Street? I thought the Amazon Building owns all the parking lot all the way to Milwaukee Street. Is that true or no?
Yes, they do. The parcel boundaries are shown in black here. And so the Ritter property is here. And so they do own everything up to Milwaukee Street. Now, but they could ostensibly choose to develop a portion of their property and consistent with the adopted plan.
So the proposed rezoning will make the Amazon property have two different zones? Is that true?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. You know, why do you think that is a good idea?
Well, I don't know that it's a great idea. But we were looking at zoning districts that were consistent with the recommendations in the adopted plan, as per the sponsoring Alder's guidance. And, you know, I do want to say that the zoning district boundary here does not cut through the building itself. And so it could be possible that there could be a redevelopment site created by the existing property owner to redevelop a portion of their property along Milwaukee Street. That wouldn't be precluded by this rezoning.
So generally, what are the guidelines for rezoning places that look like the post office? Like, I think right now is zoned as employment, and Woodman's, which is right now, I think zoned as general commercial, to Amazon. What generally is the, you know, the variance around the city, but the uniformity of it also in terms of zones? In other words, why?
Go ahead. So I think, again, what we were trying to accomplish here is to come up with zoning districts that match the recommendations in the adopted Milwaukee Street Special Area Plan. And so over here, you asked about kind of the post office site over in this area. The plan recommends employment for this area. And so there wasn't a rezoning recommended in that area. It's still showing up as suburban employment, like it is today. This is the Woodman's site down in this quadrant of the plan area, currently zoned commercial center. And since that use is still planned for general commercial, there's no zoning change planned, or there's no zoning change recommended for that site. Really, the zoning changes are these two: the TSS district along Milwaukee Street, and this TRU-1, or multifamily residential district, behind it.
So I guess my question is basically, what is the difference between the kind of work the post office does and the kind of work Amazon does? So if there's no difference, why can't they be zoned the same?
Well, let's see. Let's go back to their existing zoning. So they're zoned differently today. The post office site is zoned for suburban employment, and the plan recommends employment uses for the long-term future. On the Amazon site, the current zoning is industrial, and the plan recommendation is for mixed use and high-density residential in this area for the long-term land use. And so since the, I guess, the emphasis of this rezoning is to choose districts that are consistent, not with the uses that are on the ground today, but that are consistent with the recommendations in the plan, the site where the Amazon Building is located is being proposed for a rezoning to a high-density residential district, consistent with that plan recommendation. Whereas the post office building is actually just recommended to stay as it is, suburban employment, because it's planned for long-term employment use.
All right. Thank you so much. My last question is for the City Attorney. So you indicated that there are no significant legal issues. What are the other legal issues? I mean, they may not be significant, but you alluded to the fact that there are legal issues by saying there are no significant issues.
Well, yeah, what I meant to say is, what I tried to say is that there are legal concepts that were discussed quite a bit in the public comment, such as nonconforming use. So that is a legal concept that comes out of state statute, and it's in our ordinances. And that's one of the major issues for the folks who spoke in opposition to the rezoning, is it's going to make the Amazon use a nonconforming use. And what that means is that when you have a use that is permitted, and a law comes in and changes that to an illegal use, you get to keep using the property as you were, as a nonconform. In other words, even though you might not be able to start anew under the new law, you can keep doing that. But it kind of puts you in a different category of administrative, how we handle it from a city, in terms of how much you can expand the property, and how much, you know, whether you can change the use of that property. And those are the things that they were referring to. But when I said there weren't any legal issues, we can legally create nonconforming uses. You can do a rezoning that creates nonconforming uses, and it is not illegal in the sense that we would be, it would be an illegal rezoning. But it does create other issues, and those are part of the policy questions you'll be talking about tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Lemmer.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this question is for Attorney Strange. So if we wanted to pursue rezoning at the Amazon site to CCT instead, so that they're not a nonconforming use, but also, you know, zoned to accommodate the special area plan, how would we do that? Would we vote on the protest petition, vote in favor of the protest petition, and then ask staff for a new zoning map amendment, and then refer it to Plan Commission?
No. With a zoning map amendment, there is a specific process, it's state statute and then our ordinances, for when a proposal is made. It goes through a particular process, starting with the initial notice. And then every potential change in a map amendment requires a Plan Commission recommendation. So first thing you do is you ask for the rezoning. It gets noticed. It gets noticed in the newspaper. You go to the Plan Commission. And then the role of the council tonight, under the ordinance, is just to act on the recommendation of the Plan Commission, which is to approve the ordinance as it's set. Now, if you want, if what you're asking is how do we make this CCT instead of going to TRU-2, there really is no sense, there is no reason to send it back to the Plan Commission, because within the context of the ordinance, the Plan Commission has very little authority to change an amendment that was originally proposed to TRU-2 to CCT. And the reason of that, if you look at the zoning code, there is this chart. And it says that if the Plan Commission gets a map amendment, it can make a recommendation for a different zoning district, as long as it's in the same subchapter as the original proposal, or, and is more restrictive than the original proposal. And so in this particular case, TRU-2 is in the residential district subchapter, CCT is in the commercial chapter. And so even though the Plan Commission talked about the possibility of a CCT, they really don't have the authority to do that. So if you wanted to go that route, the best thing to do is just take an action on this particular proposal. If you vote to deny this proposal, it will go away. A new proposal could be introduced and a new zoning ordinance, and go through the same process, and that could be for the CCT zoning.
Okay. So if you wanted to look at CCT zoning, then that would be something that we wouldn't do at this meeting. We would vote on the protest petition, vote on the recommendation of the Plan Commission, and then do the CCT zoning at a later time?
That's correct. You could decide after tonight, you could decide whether you want to start back with a new ordinance that would rezone it to CCT.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers. Alder, there you go.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. First, I have a question for Heather, and then for Julie Spears. Heather, could you just talk a little bit more about the resident engagement process? You indicated that this was not merely a neighborhood getting together, thinking in insular terms, thinking only on themselves. Can you just talk a little bit about the attempt to get feedback and input from folks who perhaps may be living in any kind of housing project that would come out of that, might become residents of this neighborhood, should the neighborhood plan go forth? Could you talk a little bit about that process? And what, how staff, what staff's goals are in terms of these neighborhood plans, these special area plans, and being inclusive and being equitable?
Sure, I can. Thanks for that question. I think, you know, in this particular case, I won't go into great detail, but I do want to stress that, again, this is an area where, you know, hardly anyone lives right now on the north side of Milwaukee Street. We don't have any residents right now. And it's a tremendous opportunity to accommodate a lot of our growth on the east side. It's right, you know, right now, it's well-served by the transfer point. But in any case, it's an amenity-rich neighborhood, well-served by transit, et cetera. And so I think it's always a challenge in our special area planning processes to listen to the voices that aren't there yet. And what I mean by that is that sometimes we have to go beyond what we're hearing from area residents, and take a look at what we heard during the conference of planning process about the tremendous importance of more housing and more choices in neighborhoods that are amenity-rich, the importance of transit, and the transit-housing connection. And then also, in this case, take advantage of creative ways to reach out to a broader audience. And I think the most creative thing that happened in this particular case was that staff spent hours at the east transfer point, trying to connect with folks who probably don't live right in the neighborhood, but visit it, you know, come through, are familiar with this neighborhood, perhaps shopping at Woodman's, et cetera, and trying to connect with folks about what they saw as the needs and the future for this area. And, you know, heard loud and clear that this is a great place for more housing, to accommodate more residents, also an important place for jobs, you know, again, with that transit connection. It just holds so much more opportunity than what we see on the ground today. And so, you know, that was one. And so, you know, that was one specific effort that was made in this case. We also had typical, you know, as is typical, we had community open house meetings where we invited area residents to attend and share their thoughts, share their reactions to ideas for the plan. But I think, you know, at the heart of your question is, what do we do as staff to listen to the voices that aren't there yet? And we've had to do quite a bit of that within the Oscar Meyer area and really all of our planning processes, the mall plans that are going on now where we don't have a lot of existing residents in those areas. We have to hear that broader citywide voice. And that is that we need more housing, we need more housing choices throughout the city in areas that are rich with amenities, well-served by transit and can transition to be great places to live.
Well, thank you for that. And just briefly, would you say that the city's commitment to a RESG analysis and all the work that we do also applies to how we go about our special area plans?
Absolutely. I mean, we're learning new things with each type, with each special area plan that we do. We're doing new things to reach out to BIPOC communities and in new ways, using art as a way to reach folks who might not typically want to attend city meetings, for instance. Finding ways for people to be involved just one time and not spend hours and hours on various nights coming to city meetings. And we're trying to make sure to elevate those voices, even if they're just involved in the ways that they that they can be.
So I imagine you may, you probably don't agree with the suggestion that this rezoning recommendation would be an example of systemic racism.
I do disagree with that assertion. I mean, I almost think it's just it's unrelated.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Heather. This question's for you. There's been some talk about affordable housing. And seeing that you work in the community development divisions, can you talk about the difference between what is referred to as workforce housing and our efforts more broadly regarding housing affordability? And the challenges we have in terms of housing for marginalized communities and people of color?
Sure. So the definition that we've adopted for our Affordable Housing Fund is at or below 60% CMI. Workforce housing is typically considered to be higher than that, typically 60 to 120% CMI, although there is not a universal definition. And certainly BIPOC communities experience discrimination in housing. And so our efforts to aggressively increase the supply of affordable housing with solid affirmative marketing and fair housing plans and inflection plans are genuine attempts to address broken equity.
So in other words, workforce housing, as it's been described in the earlier testimony, would not particularly workforce housing in this 80 to 120% of CMI would have a minimal impact in terms of inclusive housing for communities of color. Somewhat minimal. It would not, it would not, let's say, it would not be an innovative or powerful or effective tool in terms of affordable housing and providing more equity in our city.
We need housing across the board at all levels.
No, that's all right. That's right.
Quickly, I guess I'll say that we need housing across the board at all levels. We wouldn't support this that project financially. We did meet with that group.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It sounds like what you're saying is that this would not qualify for funds from the city's Affordable Housing Fund, per se. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder, and thank you, Julie, for hanging with us through Zoom parenting. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Hey, thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you hear my voice?
Yes.
Okay, I am weighing in on this. I'm Alder, of course, of the west side, the far west side. For about 12 years, I attended a small African-American church that is on Milwaukee Street. There are two African-American churches right off of Milwaukee Street. One is SS Morris African-American Church and the other one is St. Paul African-American Church. During the early days, much earlier days, when just when Swiss Colony closed its doors and there were neighborhood meetings about what should happen to that property, there were weekly meetings of the community. Sometimes there were only a few African-Americans who represented our church at those meetings, but they were concerned about what happened to that property that had been laid vacant. At the last time that this was before us, the urban lead talked about job opportunities, workforce housing, of course, employment opportunities. And my question of Heather is that, and if this question has already been asked, I must apologize because I was off the air for a while and my energy is ending quickly, so I'm going to put this out there. And so Heather, and I thank Alder Lemmer for asking the question, what can be done? And what I heard you say is that sending it back to the Planning Commission is not the answer. It really is the answer for this body to vote it up or down. And there has to be, or I'm hoping that there is, a win-win situation. I understand that the Planning Division went to the West Transfer Point and asked questions and I get that. But I'd like to know how many of the Planning Department went to the African-American church as well? Now that we're looking at COVID, I mean, they're not meeting on Sunday. But how many of those voices who are in that neighborhood, sometimes seven days a week, you know, really trying to put together programming and what they see as a need for that community? And there's got there, I'm hoping that there is a win-win situation. Going back to the drawing board and ask, how can we have both? How can we support workforce housing? How can we support employment? How can we support growth and development in that area? And also do the things that are purported by the four-to-four tie from the Planning Department. There are considerations. And so it's more than asking people at the bus stop. Sure, that is a transit-rich area. There, I mean, there's a bus stop there. There's 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 potential for growth and development there. But also, there is an opportunity that if there is some way that we can make this work for that part of the community, why not take it, why not take advantage of it? What's before us today is to say, no, let's shut it down. It's not saying we don't need affordable housing. We need over 1,000 units in the city of St. Louis. And so affordable housing is, yes, what we need. But also, when there's an opportunity for for people to have wage-earning jobs, to have housing that is affordable and they can reach by transit, if we can put that package together, I challenge us as a city to start looking beyond that and seeing how can we make that happen? So I'm preaching to the choir. Heather, I guess I get that. I understand that. And if this is voted down today, I trust that you and your team will go back to the drawing board with all the people who matters and making those decisions to see how we can make this work. And so I will not be voting for the rezoning, but I will be voting for Alder Lemmer's recommendation of how can we go back to the drawing board and redo this so that it works for all? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Heather, I'm not sure there's precisely a question in there, but just to affirm, the options before us tonight are to vote yes or no on this item and then there could be future action.
I'm registering my no, Madam Mayor, and I'm going to disconnect. It's time for me to disconnect right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Just to have the clerk note that Alder Harrington McKinney is excused. Vice President Abbas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question for Matt Tucker. Matt, we know we are going through Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan and also looking to zoning changes. And they're also not the scale like Amazon, that there are small places where there are mostly voluntarily, you know, with changing zoning and non-conforming or vacant lots. I would like to get opinion from you, especially with Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan, as well as citywide policy, when we do non-conforming, what are the things or criteria we previously looked or what are the preference? As I give you example in Special Area Plan, we look into, you know, more like voluntarily or vacant?
Sure, yeah. Right now, we're working on analyzing the plan recommendations, the existing land uses on the ground to formulate what we're considering basically like a surgical-type recommendation for proactive zoning map amendments. Many of those are going to be supported by property owners because they're the things that they would like to see. The goal is to not create non-conformities if at all possible and use the tools that we have, which include zoning map amendments and potentially officially mapping streets and parks to kind of reserve areas for future. And so as you're aware and the public will be seeing in the future, in the near future, we're going to be presenting those alternatives and ideas and talking to the Plan Commission about how we're going to proceed down that path. How do we do this? Well, we're, we don't do this that often. We, the last time we did a big, this type of a thing, or I would say something similar, would be when we adopted the zoning maps as part of the zoning code rewrite project that went from 2007 to 2012. And back then, we worked with the Zoning Code Rewrit Advisory Committee and the City's Planning Commission. And there were other Alders and interested parties involved in those discussions. We created a methodology by which we would look at the city's adopted plans. We would look at the land use on the ground, the lot size was a consideration to try and minimize the number of non-conformities and frankly, eliminate existing non-conformities that had been established as a result of 1966 zoning code. That created many, many entire swaths of neighborhoods of non-conformities. There were, when we did this, there were a few situations where we did end up creating some non-conformities. And I could, if you would like me to elaborate, and I'd be happy to do that now or later.
Matt, another follow-up question is, I don't know how many non-conforming zoning we have in City of Madison. If we have many, how do you track those? And especially there is a 50%, you know, investment thing also makes things complicated. So if you can also elaborate that.
So we don't know exactly how many non-conformities we have. We don't have a significant number of non-conformities. We generally know where they are. The non-conformities that we do know about are the residential-type non-conformities. We've overlaid our zoning maps with our land use data. And when we see a mismatch, such as a two-family dwelling in a zoning district that's single-family, we have that property noted. There's a note in our property files, we call it like a flag, that identifies that a property is a non-conforming. We do not have a lot of commercial or industrial employment-type legal land conforming uses. By and large, we didn't create many and we don't have many. We have a few that we're aware of that the tricky part about keeping track of the 50% or 100%, those are two numbers that relate to the amount of improvement that you can do is, what they relate to is the improvements that result in an increase in value of the property, which is a number that's generated by the City Assessor's Office. And it isn't always exactly how much money you spend on your property directly correlates to a significant increase in value. For example, a building needs a foundation and it might cost you $10,000 to put a foundation underneath that building. But the assessor's not going to say you increased the value of your property $10,000 because you put a new foundation on it. They're going to say you may have increased the value of the property $500 or $1,000. Those increases are always measured in the next year. Because the next year is when tax rolls come out and we know how values have increased. Big projects to non-conforming uses, we watch because they come across our building inspection zoning cover. We're aware of them. We often work with the property owner to caution them that they may be moving towards exceeding the value percentage numbers. We haven't had any in the time I've been here. We had one that was a big addition to a two-family dwelling in a single-family district. It was about the closest that we got and the value increase did not end up being a 50% value increase in next year when the evaluations were published by the City Assessor. But when we come across these, we set them aside for a future follow-up to see to ensure that the value has not been exceeded. And then when we're dealing with improvements over time, because this is a thing that happens through time, so some non-conforming uses will be non-conforming for decades. We go back into the permit record and then compare it to the assessor record to see what permits were issued and how values were increased to make our best guess about how that project impacted the value and how much of the 50% value has been spent or used for that improvement project. So you can track it through time. It's a complicated process.
So it will be a right statement if I say, city is usually not talking about like especially this project, but city usually avoid non-conforming or commercial because of those complication and calculation, complicated process to track?
I wouldn't say we avoid it because of the complications and calculations because that's something that happens in our back office. I can tell an Alder person the complications if they ask me about how tricky it is to track it. I think the policy decision is more about eliminating non-conforming uses. It's a decision of, do we want to see this use in this area? Or do we want to eventually see it go away? And that is ultimately the decision that is made that would create a non-conforming use condition on a property.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder. President Carter.
Thank you. Heather, I have a question for you. When we look at what we're voting on tonight, it makes me wonder the areas that you have mentioned. You mentioned the West Town area, for example. So when we look at the planning for the West Town area, are we looking at what you're trying to do tonight? In other words, would it be better to have foresight than hindsight?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. So I do think, and I've talked with Alder Foster about this too, that really the best process is to know upfront as you're planning for an area that one of the goals is to identify certain high priority is to identify certain high priority, uh, properties for rezoning. You know, I, I think had we been in this, um, this mindset back in 2017, when the Milwaukee Street Special Area Plan was underway, um, we could have worked with property owners, we could have worked with decision makers to really make it more transparent, um, that hey, we're interested in not only allowing for these future uses, but in really pushing for them. And one way to do that is through rezoning properties proactively, once the plan is adopted. I, I think that that is the best way forward. Um, I think we're, we're taking steps toward that. Um, you know, when the Oscar Meyer plan was adopted, for instance, uh, the council, you know, on the floor of the council, it was determined that we would take some steps to utilize our zoning tools in order to achieve some of the plan recommendations. And as Alder Abbas mentioned, we're, we're working with him now on the nuances of that and, um, plan to work with area residents and property owners, um, on, you know, selective rezonings within that Oscar Meyer plan area. I think that as we embark on new planning processes, we can make this more transparent. If this is, if we know that this is the will of the, the council, um, to, to move forward utilizing zoning as a tool to better and maybe more quickly achieve our plan recommendations, we can make that more transparent during our planning processes. And so, you know, in a very short answer to your question is, is yes, that I think we can, we can begin to, to really identify the highest priority sites in our planning processes and work to make that more transparent to property owners, um, that, that we're actually hoping to rezone their properties swiftly, um, after adoption of plans. Again, in some cases, that's going to be welcomed by property owners because they'll, they'll want to see, um, the economic opportunity, um, that's associated with a rezoning of, of their property. Uh, we're seeing that on a lot of the Oscar Meyer site, um, today, where we have a property owner very interested in redeveloping consistent with the adopted plan. The case that's before you tonight is very different in that we have a property owner who's just invested a tremendous amount of money with the understanding that they had the right to retain this use on the site in perpetuity. Um, and so that's why this, this is so very different, uh, the situation that is before the council this evening.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Alder. Uh, Alder Skidmore.
Thank you. Um, uh, I'll, I'll have a question for Heather, but before I ask that, I have a question for Matt, and I think, uh, uh, the question has already been framed. Um, uh, assuming this council, uh, passes, uh, the rezoning of the, of this property over basically the objection of the property owner, will that property owner be able to make improvements, uh, to the property consistent with, uh, the original zoning, which is IL?
Yes, they will be, um, it won't be consistent with IL. It'll be, uh, they will be allowed to, um, they will be allowed to modify the building, alterations, additions and expansions. There are limitations on non-conforming uses, uh, and, uh, there's a limitation on the amount of, uh, expansion they could do, like say a big building addition, uh, where they wouldn't be able, they would not be allowed to exceed 50% of the current total assessed value of the structure over the lifetime of the structure. So, um, if they had a, an idea to double the size of the building, that would probably be a problem. Uh, but they can continue to operate and use and maintain the property, uh, in perpetuity.
Uh, thank you. I'm, have a follow-up question for, uh, Attorney Strange, and then I have a question for Heather. Um, Attorney Strange, uh, um, I, I think Matt answered my question, but not in the way that he thought. Uh, this sounds like a taking to me. What do you think?
Uh, no, I, I would disagree with that. So, a, a regulatory taking is, um, is when we remove all, uh, all use of the property. It's a pretty high bar to take, uh, to, to commit a regulatory taking. So here, um, by zoning from IL to TRU2, um, I don't believe that that would, that would, um, qualify as a regulatory taking. It's also not a taking to create a non-conforming use. Um, so that's, um, so I, 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 um, I would, I'm not aware of a, of a case, um, that would exist that would support the case for a taking here, um, which is sort of one of the reasons why at the beginning I wanted to, um, point out that I, you know, from a legal perspective, I don't see an issue here. I do think it's primarily a policy question based on all these issues that you guys are talking about.
Well, I, um, agree with you that you probably have a better understanding of the law than many people, uh, but I still think and agree with you that this is a bad policy decision that we're going to have to come up with. And what I see is, um, somebody who has worked in good faith, put a lot of money into something, uh, may be restricted to what they can do because of a change in the zoning. Uh, now I have a follow-up question that I hadn't planned on asking to Heather. Um, I've been, uh, tracking, uh, the plans, uh, uh, that the planning department have been making for, uh, West Town and the area in the ninth district, uh, the Odana Plan. And I've had running conversations with, uh, owners of CBL, or excuse me, the owners of the mall, which would be CBL. And, uh, I, uh, note that, uh, we haven't had any conversations about their concerns about the plan, but I know that, uh, there are some concerns within the neighborhood that, uh, at least the last proposed plan, uh, uh, in effect would, uh, totally eliminate West Town Mall. And I know that, uh, the people that are putting a lot of money into it, like Saratage and, uh, CBL and, uh, Von Mauer in their recent developments, uh, uh, would probably not look favorably on this plan. Uh, uh, do you see a scenario where you could attempt to rezone this area into something that would drastically alter the use, uh, such as the current plan would have? Or the current proposed plan?
Yeah, I, that's a good question. I, I'll say I, I doubt it. They're not, not so different a zoning district that, that would actually preclude the uses that are there today. I think in, in both mall areas, things are going to happen along probably different timelines. There will be a phased approach and it won't be as easy to just pick zoning districts to, to zone into. One of the new ones, as of tonight, just adopted right before this item, is the new regional mixed-use district. It's a very flexible zoning district, allows for a wide variety of residential and commercial uses, and I, I think that that is one that might be appropriate to rezone portions of those mall areas to, uh, in the future and, and wouldn't preclude the existing uses.
I don't agree with your comments, but that's not a discussion we'll have tonight. Uh, thank you. That's all for now.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bedar.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is either, I, I guess for Heather or, or for Matt. So we've been having a lot of discussion about the, the previous policy decisions that we made during our, um, zoning rewrite of not, trying to avoid non-conforming. First, I'm making that statement with a question. Am I correct that that was a process we went through to try to avoid having many, many non-conforming?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, in that rezoning of the entire city, when we were, you know, remapping the entire city, that was an emphasis.
And, and why did we do that? Why did we make that, that, why did we decide that having many non-conforming uses was probably not a good policy decision at that time, not saying?
Well, there are a lot of reasons. I mean, some of the speakers spoke to some of the reasons. Um, and this was one of the items that the Zoning Code Rewrite Advisory Committee worked on with us was creating an, uh, a, a roadmap to, um, to mapping the, the districts that had been, then created the text. Um, we met with, uh, a number of the members and, uh, we had conversations and, uh, in those conversations, we talked about, uh, one of the terms that often comes up is called transformational zoning. And that is seeing your plans envisioned on your zoning map and basically transforming your, uh, uh, your zoning to be more forward-thinking to the future or recognizing what exists at, at the time, uh, what's on the ground today. And the decision was made at that, at the time we were mapping, with a few limited exceptions, uh, to, um, to strive to avoid legal non-conforming uses. Uh, legal non-conforming uses can affect, um, as we've mentioned earlier, financing, insurance, long-term viability of the property, maintenance and, and, and interest, owners interested in maintaining their property. Uh, there are many, many factors that would, um, that would, uh, that are not the best policy related to creation of non-conforming uses. And so that was a decision that, that was made to avoid doing that.
And, and that decision, if my recollection is correct, involved a lot of public input and discussion about the, the kind of the decision around whether we were going to do this transformational zoning or kind of try to, to stick to what is on the ground, will just keep it as, as the, the use instead of making it non-conforming?
I would say that's true, um, e- e- except as those of you that participate in the Zoning Code Rewrite understand, it's, it was not a very exciting come-to-the-meetings type of, of a, of a thing. Uh, it was, there were many influential, uh, and involved people in the process, people that do affordable housing, people from neighborhoods, Alders, uh, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, UDC Plan Commission, Landmarks Commission, um, uh, developers, um, uh, a whole variety of people that participated in the 25, in the 25-person committee that was the rewrite committee. So by the size of the committee and the membership, we had a lot of involvement. And then, then there were people that showed up that also participated because they were interested and aware. Uh, I think it was, uh, uh, I, I think for people that are into it and people that are aware, it was a, it was a inclusive process.
So it is, and maybe this is for either Heather or Attorney Strange, so is the idea of us moving to a, a different, um, way of, of thinking about zoning, which should be this transformational zoning, would be a policy decision, right? We would have to have a discussion that that is, if we decided that's kind of what we want to do across the city, that would be a policy decision that we would need to, to make?
Well, I, I mean, I think what's before you tonight is a, it's, it's a, it's a single case. It doesn't need to be, you know, precedent-setting and set a whole new policy for the way that we do, um, proactive zonings, following plans. I think that that would be an option if the, if the city wanted to create a, a more formal policy with, you know, some, uh, you know, a better, more transparent sense of, of what would happen following the adoption of plans, that would be an option. But I think, you know, what's before you tonight is really the, the rezoning of one small portion of the city, um, yes, consistent with our plans, but very inconsistent with the existing use of, of what's there today. And I, I, I don't think it needs to be precedent-setting for every single decision here moving forward.
Are they, can you think of, uh, uh, we have many kind of neighborhood plans, right? I know I have one neighborhood, and we all have many neighborhood plans, and, and those neighborhood plans are oftentimes made of a vision for future use that oftentimes are visions, right, that of a preference of, of use, including more housing, more affordable housing, really affordable housing, as Alder ever saw funding out, like actually affordable housing, um, do, is that correct? That we have a lot of plans that have these visions of things that are not on the ground cor- currently?
That is correct. And, and typically in practice, we've relied on property owners and developers to initiate the rezonings to get us from point A to point B, and point B being a future, future vision. Yes.
Got it. And then my last question, um, you just talked about our previous item, which, um, created a, a pretty flexible, um, zoning, um, district. It, do you see CCT as being a, uh, within that category of flexible zoning districts?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Heather, just, uh, kind of going off that last question, so, you know, I've heard from a lot of the, the speakers tonight that, kind of two things. One, that we have, uh, essentially an adopted city policy that we, uh, should, that we do not do quote-unquote transformational zoning and that we, um, uh, that, that we don't, that we look to avoid creating non-conforming use. Um, well, I think that that is, that, as I understand it, that was really specific to the zoning rewrite process in terms of the decisions that were made. Um, I guess, can you, can you confirm that? Is that understanding correct, that, that in, to the degree that we have a quote-unquote policy on this question, that it was really, um, the deliberation was around what, how, how we should approach the zoning code rewrite and the, the rezoning of the entire city at that time?
Yeah, I think if you look back to, for formal documentation, that's where you would find it, in that question of rezoning the entire city back in 2012. Um, I would say that it's also true that we have a long-term practice of, of not doing this, of again, and kind of waiting for the init- uh, initiative of property owners, developers to propose a rezoning and making a determination as to whether that's consistent with our adopted plans. And so, so that is our long-term practice. And I guess it's fair to say that that's what folks, you know, expect, but I don't, it, it's not codified, it's not in a policy document, except for, um, the time back in 2012, when we were really wrestling with how to apply the new zoning districts, um, to the entire city.
Great, so yeah, that makes sense. So it was, it's, um, certainly our practice, and this is not a, a normal practice, but, uh, approving this tonight would not represent a, a break in, uh, an established policy. Sorry, I was just asking for your.
Oh, or, uh, again, I, there, there, the only formal policy that's, that's really on this is associated with the citywide rezoning. Otherwise, it's a long-term practice to which we, we've hardly ever strayed, I guess. That's what I would say.
Okay, thank you. And I, I think you already sort of said this, but just to confirm, again, if, if this were approved for this particular location, it would not, uh, create a new, uh, de facto citywide policy? That means that we would be going and looking for, uh, quote-unquote transformational zoning opportunities?
That is my understanding. I, I would not assume that if this passes tonight, that, that we as staff are looking for other opportunities proactively citywide to, to do this. I do think that we will be much more diligent and transparent in our planning efforts to identify key opportunities for rezonings and make sure that property owners and policymakers alike are, um, you know, going in eyes wide open on those issues.
Thank you. And I think my last question for you is, you mentioned earlier on the, um, kind of approximate housing that, that, uh, would be expected to, to occur within the special area plan if the, if the plans were brought to fruition. Can you just, uh, remind us what that number is? And then, um, you know, that covers a broader area than we're talking about tonight, but the, the part that we're talking about tonight in these, these parcels, the, the Ritter-owned parcels, kind of what, what number of housing units would we expect to see there if it were to develop consistent with the plan?
Sure. So the, the total plan area as a whole, stretching from the white property all the way over to the eastern part of the, the Amazon site today, um, could accommodate up to 1,200 total new housing units. And that's a rough estimate based on, you know, it's probably a wide range, um, but about 1,200 for the total plan area. And the area that's occupied by the, the Ritter site, um, we would estimate in the same way, um, about 500 units.
Thank you. Uh, and I just have two questions, John, for you. Um, the first one, you know, again, we've heard a lot of, um, uh, a, a little bit of the sky is falling from some of our, uh, public testimony in the beginning, but can you, um, just from, from your understanding, what would be the immediate impact to Amazon as a, as a, an operator of this, um, location, um, on, today and on their future operations, the jobs, et cetera, if this, uh, zoning map amendment were to be approved tonight?
Uh, there would be no immediate impact to their operations. Um, as Matt explained, and we've mentioned a couple other times, the impact really is going forward if they want to, um, expand the, um, size of the size of their facility, for example, it's subject to that 50% rule. If they were wanting to change the use from packaging to something else, that's not, um, that's, uh, then, then it could become an issue. But as long as they continue to do what they're doing now, it would have the impact on their operations that I, that I can foresee.
Thank you. And, um, I guess conversely, if we, if we don't change the zoning and it, and it stays IL zoning and the current property owner, um, wants to continue to, to use this prop, the 15 acre property as a distribution center forever. Is there anything that we can do, uh, to stop that if, if the zoning is not changed?
If the zoning remains exactly as it is, um, and they continue to do exactly what they're doing, then as long as it's permitted, that nothing, they would just be able to continue doing it.
And, um, there was a suggestion that there's perhaps a win-win compromise solution in the form of a CCT zoning, that, that would kind of accomplish everyone's shared goals. So if, um, you know, this were voted down tonight and CCT zoning was proposed and approved, would the, would the, would that property, um, continue to be able to be used as a 15 acre distribution center indefinitely?
Uh, yes, because that, that use is allowed in the CCT district.
So there would effectively, for the use of a package delivery center, there would be no effect of changing it from IL to CCT?
Correct. It would, it would, it would remove the issue of non-conformity because be able to continue operating just as are for the same use, just under a different district.
Right. So it would be a, it's a permitted use today, it would be a permitted use tomorrow under CCT.
Correct.
So while the, while CCT would allow uses that are consistent with what the plan calls for, it would also allow uses that are not consistent with what the, what the plan calls for.
Well, with the respect to this particular use, maybe defer to Heather or Matt in terms of the plan. They know the plan better than I do, but if, if this particular use package delivery is inconsistent with the plan, then yes, it would, then yes.
Great. Thank you. Those are all my questions, Mayor. I do have some comments if no one else has questions.
Thank you, Alder. Um, I think if there are no other questions, we do need to formally close the public hearing and get a motion on the floor. And I'll just remind folks that because, um, we do have a protest petition on this item, we do need a, a three-quarter vote. And the proper motion is to adopt, um, so that we can correctly see if we've got the three-quarters vote or not. President Carter?
Move to adopt.
Thank you. Moved and seconded to adopt. So we now have a motion on the floor. Alder Foster.
Thank you. And thank you all for bearing through the long conversation here. The, the issue in front of us is a really important one, um, certainly for District 15. I think it's really important for the city as well, particularly as it relates to our, our, um, goals of creating so much needed housing. But I also think that a lot of the conversations that we had are really important, um, in a, in the broader sense. And I know that the, the questions that this proposal has brought up has, um, has caused a lot of us to think differently about how, how we do our planning efforts. And I'm really encouraged, uh, to hear from Heather about, um, some of the changes that we might make in terms of how we approach both planning and then, and then zoning. So, um, you know, I'm excited to see where things go. But I do think it is important that we really focus on this, this decision in front of us here tonight. You know, I would also say that I, I think we all agree, well, I, I don't think the property owner would agree, but, but certainly I think staff and myself agree that, you know, the best time to have pursued this zoning change would have been at the time of the adoption of, of the Milwaukee Street Special Area Plan. But that, you know, I wasn't older back then and that didn't happen and we can't turn back the clock. And the reason that I, um, the reason that I asked staff to work on this and, um, the reason that I've introduced it is because while, while we really missed that best opportunity, it really begs the question then, well, when? I mean, do, if, if we didn't do it then, we could do it now or and, you know, I guess theoretically we could wait for a vacancy in the use and hope, uh, that whoever is older at the time, um, or perhaps somebody on staff remembers all of this and says, hey, maybe this is a good idea, a good time to rezone. But we really don't have any processes that set up to do that. And the reality is that, um, I don't believe that the current property owner would be any happier about that rezoning, even if Amazon left and it was sitting vacant. The current property owner has told me very clearly that they have zero interest in selling. They have zero interest in redeveloping. Their interest is to continue this use indefinitely. It's a very profitable use. It's a good location for a distribution center. This is, this is part of a trust and the interest is to be able to make rent off of this property. They, they do not want to sell it. They do not want to develop it. They do not agree with, they do not support our adopted plan and our vision for this part of the city. And so the question in front of us is, do we just, do we say, okay, you know, we made a plan, but the property owner doesn't agree? And we are going to defer to the property owner and wait for there to be a new property owner or wait for a property owner to change their mind and say, okay, fine. I, I will, I will, I will move in the direction of that plan. And the state legislature created the zoning authority for cities specifically for us to be able to make these decisions for ourselves, for the community to decide how do we want to use different parts of our city? And it gives us a really significant authority to, to set the zoning, to say, this is what can happen here. This is what can't happen here. We have historically used that more as a, as a check against, uh, against development, against someone saying, this is what I'd like to do. And we use it as a permission. We say, okay, well, we'll update the zoning to accommodate usually a more intense use for somebody as long as we feel okay about the project. But we have, we haven't used it in a way to say, you know what, we, this used to be an industrial part of the city. We don't want it to be an industrial part of the city anymore and we're going to change it. But it's completely within our authority and it is something that we need to consider. At the end of the day, it, it, this is literally a question. There's a conflict in the desire of the use of this property by the current property owner and the desire of the city. And the reason that, that we had so many people show up tonight, so many really powerful influential people, all representing the real estate industry is because, it, it's not because of non-conforming use. It's not because of Amazon. It's not, it's, it's not, it, there's no coincidence that Amazon didn't show up here, didn't submit anything saying, please don't do this. They don't care. It doesn't impact them at all. This is literally about the property owner wanting to, to maintain the current use because it's in their best interest. And so our decision is, do we put their interest in front of the community interest? And that's pretty much it. CCT is a distraction. It won't change a thing. It sounds like a compromise, but it's not. They suggested it because all they really care about is a package delivery service. And because that's a permitted use in CCT, they'd be happy to switch it. They say, well, look, that, you can, you can, you can implement the plan with that. So, so that's a good solution. They have no interest in implementing the plan. Their sole interest is to maintain a 15 acre distribution center and lease it to Amazon or whoever the next person will be. So we're either going to say, okay, I guess that's that. They're the property owner. They get to decide. Or we're going to exercise our zoning authority. And we're going to, and we're going to make a decision that's in the best interest of the community and towards a use of that land that is the highest and best interest for the community, not just for that property owner. So there is a policy decision at stake and that's it. This is not about what we're going to do everywhere else. It's about this property. And, um, I ask you to support it. It is, um, very much in the best interest of the east side of Madison. And it's also in the best interest of the city of Madison. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call on Alder Lemmer and hand the chair over to President Carter briefly.
Thank you. Um, this is, this is a difficult situation. And, you know, I, I hear, you know, what, you know, my colleague is saying, and I have the utmost respect for, for him and for the neighborhood. I, I supported zoning the Amazon site CCT at Plan Commission so that Amazon could be, continue to be a conforming use. And we could simultaneously accommodate the special area plan. And, you know, I do think that is the, the direction that we should go. This business just opened their doors. I don't think making a business that just opened their doors after they invested in this property is, is the right message or the right precedent to set. And importantly, it puts at great risk the jobs that have been created here during a pandemic, jobs that, you know, people are depending on, and it signals to other employers not to invest in Madison. And with the number of special area plans that are being worked on right now, I think that we need to have a broader discussion and a broader strategy for addressing the zoning in these areas to make sure that we are, you know, supporting the intentions of these plans and of the comprehensive plan too. I just think rezoning in this case and creating a, a non-conforming use, um, for a business that just opened their doors, isn't the right thing to do right now. Thank you.
Alder Evers?
Thank you, President Carter. This brings me back to the feelings of frustration I had when we voted on whether to approve the Amazon project to begin with, which I recall was somewhat, uh, due to a loophole in, in the zoning regarding demolition and a couple of other factors. But we had similar testimony that night, including, uh, an attorney from Seattle who thought it necessary to lecture us about the nuances of affordable housing. And again, we received more of the same. This time, uh, someone saw fit, Mr. Gary Peterson, to lecture us about systemic racism. That to me, that kind of gaslighting is really frustrating. And I would suggest those who are lobbying on behalf of Amazon and the Leo Ritter estate, choose a, a, a different tact, something that's considerably less offensive. But that aside, I would like to, uh, you know, I, I'm in campaign mode. You know that I'm running for reelection and many of us who are being, or campaigning are being asked, what is it that, what is it that, um, how do we respond to the pandemic? Should we look to go back to the status, to normal? Or are we interested in, in something different, something new? What is our vision for the future? And my answer, and I think a lot of the, the sentiment probably of many of you, that the pandemic brings us an opportunity to think about a new future. That returning to the status quo where a single property owner could determine what's best for an entire neighborhood and an entire area, not come to the table, though invited with a postcard like anybody else, and then say, we're not interested in cooperating with the common good. We're not particularly interested in the collective will of the people. Part of the problems that we have around climate change and the problems we have around, uh, racial, uh, equity and income inequality is that people are privileged and people in power and people with capital and people in wealth, with wealth are not interested in the common good and not willing to bend and adjust to the collective will of the people. And so if we think that this is the way we've always done it, and this is the status quo, and we have not been transformational and we haven't envisioned a, a different way of being, then we will be in a system where our economic and fine, financial systems continue to be hardwired to reward those at the top at the expense of everybody else. So I would ask my colleagues to think of that. What is the future that we want for our city? What is the future that we want for our country as we wrestle with recovery and the pandemic? Do we allow ourselves to envision a, uh, a future that works for everybody, that embraces the common good? And will, and will take what steps that are available to us legally to put that vision into action? So I would ask you to support this amendment. To me, it makes sense. I think it's good for our city. It's good for the, the people. It's good for this particular area. And, uh, I, it's definitely worth yours vote. I'm going to be voting in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Bedar.
Thank you, President Carter. Um, so I, I would like to, to say that I think, um, we all share a vision. I think we all share a vision for more affordable housing. I think we all share the vision that we see in our plans, whether it's area plans and neighborhood plans. Many of us have been deeply involved in creating those with, with our constituents, residents, and, and trying to have a, a vision for the future. I don't think this kind of decision-making is, is a, a vision. I think that we need, again, I, I would urge us as a body to think that visions are really about policies. It's really about broad policies that really allow us to move that vision forward. And when, when we, um, take decisions in, in this way, I don't think we actually set a vision forth. I think we create a lot of unintended consequences that are very difficult to take into consideration with one item at a time. And that if we have a policy decision, then we can really think about all the potential, um, ramifications and really create a way that we are, um, actually, uh, maybe, um, diminishing the amount of unintended consequences. And most, most importantly, that we're being transparent with everybody, right? With, with everybody involved, um, whether it's the, uh, residents who, who want that, that housing and whether it is the businesses that want to, to have businesses so that they can create jobs for the people that need housing, that we are transparent. And so that to me is what's the most important piece of, of this decision-making. I don't particularly, I'm, I'm going to say have no, um, set, um, strong opinions about whether we should, um, be, be thinking, uh, totally about the way that we're doing, um, our, our zoning and thinking about progressive or transformational zoning tonight. Because I think that that requires a really in-depth conversation and decision-making and a, a set of, um, an ability to, to hear all the different information and then to move forward with a policy decision. So again, I, I don't, I hope that we're not, um, thinking about this as a division between who thinks that we should have a vision for the future and more affordable housing for our city and who shouldn't. Because I am looking at all of you and I know all of you share that vision.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and also, uh, thank my colleague Alder Bedar for recognizing that the, one of the reasons that the 20 of us are around this Zoom meeting is, is that we all share a view, vision for the future of Madison. And, um, to, to suggest that there is any other reason really is insulting to me. I'm not saying insulted by, but insulting to me. And I re, I bring this up because the reason that I, as a West District Alder, even had, um, a conversation around a conversation around Milwaukee Street with someone who I respect tremendously, and that's Dr. Ruben Anthony. Dr. Anthony is the leader of the Urban League. And I don't believe that anyone would say that he does not have paramount in his mind and his thinking and his actions, what is best for the city of Madison and especially for what's best for Black and Brown people. He's the one that invited me to the table. He's the one that talked about job opportunities. Dr. Anthony is the one that talked about the potential for what this new development can bring for the city of Madison. And I had personal experience because for 12 years, I traveled back and forth to Milwaukee Street and, and two of those little black churches. And so I care about what happens to Madison, as many of us do. But when we're talking about policymaking, we don't make policy by making sausage on the floor. We don't change it when it's convenient for us. We don't get, and that's one of the things that I've heard developers say to me over and over is that they avoid Madison because it is so difficult to process and do business with the city of Madison. That's what I've been told. And so now what is before us is, is that, and Heather said it, is, is that transparency is very important. And if this conversation had been transparent and open and so that those who are investing in our community would know what's so, then we can stand with integrity and say that this is the policy that we are pursuing. But to change it in midstream just does not see, does not look to me like good policymaking. We have just changed a new administration and hopefully our city will be among the city that will receive dollars, that will help the people, not just the people at the top, but those who are struggling at the bottom. But we must be accountable and transparent in how we do and process our business. I will not be supporting this because I'm hoping that we can go back to the drawing table and say, what is a win-win and how can we get to that point? But this is just not the way we as policymakers, because I hear it all the time, policymakers, we need to make a decision, but yet and still, when that decision does not coincide with, with, with what others think, then we want to toss it out. That is not how we make good, solid policymaking decisions. I would ask my colleagues to reconsider that and think about how do we make good policy decisions as we move beyond where we are and where Madison could be? Please reconsider your vote and not support this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Vice President Abbas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will not take too much time. I think so some of my colleagues covered a lot of my thoughts. What, what I will say is this, I definitely acknowledge, because my neighborhood also went through special area plan and how much time it takes between community to engage. But at the same time, it's unfortunate situation we came across. We can all be agree in 2018, if we would have adopted the zoning, we, we would have avoided this situation, but here we are. I, I firmly believe jobs and affordable housing, that they are, they are correlated very strongly, housing and jobs for sure. And there is a compromise I see through this discussion and question-answer session. I see a compromise through CCT, or we are not voting on that, but I think so that could be a possible direction where it's a win-win for everyone and, and, and it could be a good way for us to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. The motion is to adopt. I will remind us that it requires 15 votes to be adopted. So we will do a roll call. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will call the roll, please.
Alder Bedar?
No.
Alder Bedar is no. President Carter?
No.
President Carter is no. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers is aye. Alder Foster?
Aye.
Alder Foster's is aye. Alder Furman?
No.
Alder Furman is no. Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
Alder Harrington McKinney is no. Alder Heck?
Aye.
Alder Heck is aye. Alder Hennick?
No.
Alder Hennick is no. Alder Kemble?
Aye.
Alder Kemble is aye. Alder Lemmer?
No.
Alder Lemmer is no. Alder Martin?
No.
Alder Martin is no. Alder Prestagiacomo?
Aye.
Alder Prestagiacomo is aye. Alder Rumel is excused. Alder Skidmore?
No.
Alder Skidmore is no. Alder Tierney?
No.
Alder Tierney is no. Alder Verveer?
Aye.
Alder Verveer is aye. Alder Wehelia?
No.
Alder Wehelia is no. Vice President Abbas?
No.
Vice President Abbas is no. Alder Elbrus?
No.
Alder Elbrus is no. Alder Balday?
No.
Alder Balday is no. Six aye? Thirteen no.
Thank you. With only six ayes, the motion fails and we will move on to the rest of our public hearings. Item number nine is Legisstar 63492, Open a Public Hearing on a New License at Hy-Vee Wine and Spirits on Mineral Point Road. We have several registrants who may still be with us, starting with Ron Palestrini of Chicago in support, representing Mark Madison LLC, to be followed by Peter Hosh.
Hello. I want to thank the council for allowing me to speak tonight. My name's Ron Palestrini. I'm with Mark Madison LLC. We're the owner of High Point Center, which contains the location for the proposed Hy-Vee liquor store. I just want to take a minute to convey that we're thrilled to have Hy-Vee to join our shopping center. As you're aware, brick and mortar retail's taken a pretty large hit over the last few years and our former anchor tenant, Pier One, was a casualty of that trend when it filed bankruptcy last year and vacated the space. The Pier One vacancy left us with a pretty big uphill battle to fill a 9,000 square foot hole in our shopping center. Then we got hit with COVID, which made matters worse. So we were pretty concerned to have such a prominent anchor space sit vacant for a long period of time, because there's just not a lot of 9,000 square foot tenants out there these days. Therefore, I'm telling you, it was a really true blessing for this Hy-Vee deal to come along. We couldn't ask for a better replacement tenant for Pier One. Hy-Vee's an excellent operator. They're financially sound. They build a beautiful store. Just their presence in this center is going to help us bring other tenants to the center. In fact, we've actually signed two new leases since we've signed this Hy-Vee deal. In addition to our commitment to Hy-Vee, I also wanted to spell any rumors about this property being ripe for redevelopment. As owners, we're strongly committed to not only maintain, but improve the quality of this property. We've recently spent over $200,000 in repaving the parking lot, enhancing the landscaping, converting the lighting to LED. We're, we're committed to extending our leases here with our existing tenants. We've, we've worked diligently to fill the vacancies. So I, I just want to make it clear that this is a long-term hole in our portfolio. We have no plans to redevelop the site. So just in summary again, we're thrilled to have Hy-Vee become a tenant and join our roster at the center. I think that only they're going to greatly enhance the property by filling this large, prominent vacancy with a really beautiful, high-end store, but their added presence is, is going to help the center thrive in the years to come. So I ask that you approve this license and I thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Peter Hosh of Des Moines, Iowa, in support, representing Hy-Vee Incorporated, to be followed by Ross Grunwald.
Hello. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you council members for considering our agenda item this evening. I, I will speak to just a couple of points and let Ross speak to the bulk of the items associated with operations of facilities such as this. I think there's been some questions on competition within the area and how there's not a need for another wine and spirit store within the market. That is not, that is not true based on our data. The demand index is off the charts in this area. We operate in other markets that have similar competition and there's no issues with any of those retailers having problems outside of the normal course of business. You know, one of the reasons that we chose this location is, is its, is its visibility on Mineral Point. Obviously Mineral Point's got strong traffic counts, strong demographics in the area. It's just a great area. It's great, great retail tenants that will draw and allow for cross-shopping for our customers that really enhances the mix of the shopping center and enhances, you know, the mix of, of the retail environment as a whole within the district. We think that our offering is substantially different than what is being offered by the other retailers within the market. We will have some prepared foods that are going to be available for sale. That's different than what our competitors are offering and this is a high-end experience and something that will be a jewel within the, the city of Madison if we're allowed to move forward. I can tell you that, you know, we can't compete and make an investment like this if there are conditions imposed upon our license. We need to be on par with the other competitors within the market for us to have a sustaining business and make this investment, substantial investment within the market in a, in a building that has been vacant for quite some time and, and has no potential for tenancy outside of, of this use. We've already started work on the project, but we'll cease work if we can't obviously come to a liquor license or liquor license without contingencies. I am happy to answer any questions that anybody has for me from a, a market perspective, you know, just questions about the real estate or any other questions about Hy-Vee in general. With that, I will, I will yield my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Ross Grunwald of Cambridge, in support, to be followed by Janet Hirsch.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor Rose Conway, for giving me this time to speak. As I mentioned, my name is Ross Grunwald. I am the store director of the Hy-Vee in Fitchburg. I've been a Madison area resident for about 10 years now, being at the store in Whitney, or East Wash for quite some time, then in the Fitchburg store for a little over two years. So I have a vested interest in the Madison market of making it a, a great place to both work and live, raising three young kids in the area. Hy-Vee, we're excited to have this opportunity to bring the first thing, the lone wine and spirit store to Madison in the, on the west side of town, making an $800,000 plus investment in this property, bringing four to, at least four full-time jobs and about 11 to 15 other part-time jobs with this project. I know one of the concerns that was brought up during the Neighborhood Association was traffic. That seemed to be one of the larger concerns. As this, you know, is a retail space, traffic is always a good thing for retail. Without it, you don't have much retail happening. That's also why this location was chosen, even though there will be some traffic congestion possibly at peak times. We don't see why the former tenant or any other tenant would have any different traffic tendencies than what we are proposing with this project. I know Pete talked a little bit about the other competition in the area. As there are, as noted in the Neighborhood Association and the ALRC meeting, there are 16, as was quoted, other establishments in near proximity to buy alcohol. From my, being in the market and knowing what Hy-Vee's working on putting into this project, there may be only one, maybe two others that would have any experience similar to this project. And even that would be loosely saying that it'd be similar, as we have a lot of different offerings with this, this project. One of the other things that was brought up was the neighborhood, being a challenged neighborhood. Police Captain Kelly Donahue stated during the ALRC meeting that from the police side of it, they don't have any concerns outside of the traffic, which once again refers back to the, it being a retail area, it's going to have a higher traffic content or than your residential area. And then just talking about the redevelopment, as the building owner referenced earlier, and that the possibility of rezoning of the whole West Town Mall area was something that Alder Skidmore was referencing with the Planning and Zoning Committee. There's no plans of that, that we've been notified of and shouldn't be something that holds us up from going ahead with this one. And then the last thing about the restrictions on the license, this was presented to the common council with no restrictions from the ALRC committee meeting. So I feel that with that, the common council should also move forward with this license in full with no restrictions. At that, I yield my time.
Thank you. We also have Janet Hirsch of Cedar Creek Trail in opposition available to answer questions. Tyler Power of Des Moines, Iowa, in support, representing Hy-Vee, available to answer questions. And Judy Blueell of Oak Creek Trail in opposition, available to answer questions. Are there questions for any of our registrants? Alder Bedar?
Thank you. I had a question for the Hy-Vee representative. So you mentioned that it should move forward without the conditions. And we have five conditions before us that were put forward by Alder Skidmore. Are you opposed to all those conditions? I mean, I understand you're saying you prefer no conditions, but...
The determination, sorry, my name is Pete Hosh again. The determination has been made internally that we can't make this investment if we are not on par with our competition. So any conditions would make it a, a project that's not viable for us moving forward.
Any, sorry, just to clarify, any of the current conditions being proposed? Or are you saying you would not move forward with any conditions at all?
We would not move forward with any conditions.
Thank you, Alder. President Carter?
Yes, this question is for Peter, I believe, the property owner. I'm sorry, Ron. Ron, what can you tell me about the, the strip mall where Pier One used to be? What is the status of how many stores that are vacant at this time? And have you had any problems in the parking lot of this mall?
As I did mention, we just did lease up after the signing of Hy-Vee. We were able to just lease up two new deals on our vacancies, which leaves us really only one vacancy, which was the former Once Upon a Child space, which unfortunately was byproduct of, of COVID. As far as any traffic or safety concerns, we, we've had no issues at that center whatsoever. So I'm actually surprised to hear that there's some concerns about that, because we, we've had no complaints about any of that.
And how late are the stores open in that, in that strip mall?
Well, generally, the restaurants are open a little bit later in that 10 o'clock range, but Planet Fitness is open pretty early and open fairly late. They worked 24 hours at one point. COVID's changed a lot of the operators, but there's a pretty widespread from, from morning till, till night at that center.
Okay. Thank you. And then to, I think it's Peter with Hy-Vee's, correct? Peter, have you been, when you were looking for space and you fall upon this 9,000 square feet, what do you know about the area prior to, go ahead?
Yes, I'm familiar with the area. I've, I've actually did all three stores that we've gotten, food stores that we've got within the market over the course of time in my career. So I'm familiar with the mall. We've looked at the mall for, actually a Wahl Burger's restaurant location at one point in time. We've looked at the ShopCo building in the past when that was vacant. We've looked at the redevelopments that's going to be taking place just to the, just to the east of here, that's on the north side of the road. That was a project that was presented to us. I'm familiar with the area. I know it's a nice, in my mind, it's a nice area. It's got some apartment complexes and things, but it's a nice area. You know, those are transitional uses between retail and single-family residential. If you've got other specific questions, I can answer those, but I'm very familiar with the area, having done, you know, Westgate Mall being the closest project to, to this location that I've done. But I'm familiar with other opportunities that have presented themselves within this area.
Do we, when it's time to talk to staff, is, Mayor, do you know if Assistant Chief Wall is on?
Alder, we can see, but we have other questions for registrants still.
Yes, I was just going to say I want to come back for staff. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Alder. Alder Skidmore.
Thank you. Janet Hirsch is a member of the Board of the Tamarack Neighborhood Association, which is pretty much directly to the north of this area and is one of the people who spoke in opposition. If she's available, if she could speak, she's been at previous meetings and the ALRC about her opposition and the neighborhood opposition.
Yeah, yes, this is Janet. Thank you for letting me speak. The, I did attend the ALRC meeting, and a couple of things I just wanted to point out is, our association is about a block north of, of this, of Mineral Point Road, north, north of that site that's there. Our concerns are the number of places in the area that already have carryout alcohol available and the, the, the issues that we've been having along Tree Lane, where those people, some of the people that are currently purchasing from the existing locations are buying small quantities. You know, they're littering along Tree Lane, they're speeding late at night. So there are a lot of things that are going on that are, you know, not, not good for our quality of life. And I guess our feeling is that, is that adding another liquor store is not going to be, is not going to benefit our community or the communities neighboring, neighboring in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Has that addressed your question? All right. I have no other questions for registrants, so we will close the public hearing. And President Carter, let's get a motion, please.
Move adoption.
Is there a second?
Second to adoption.
Moved and seconded to adopt. We'll go to questions for staff next. Alder, excuse me, President Carter?
Yes. Is Assistant Chief Wall or one of the officers on? I wanted to ask a question about police calls to this area.
I think we have Lieutenant Sanders here.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Alder.
So Lieutenant Sanders, can you tell me about the number of police calls to this area? And especially, we're looking at the Mineral Point Road, both sides, but specifically the strip mall?
So I would like to answer that question. However, I have not come prepared to answer that question. I was unaware that this was going to be a topic of discussion, therefore I did not look into that area. So I have no answer at this time. My apologies, Alder and Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there other questions for staff? President Carter, Attorney Zilivi is here, from the attorney's office, if that's useful to you.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Zilivi, the same question?
Hello.
Hello.
I'm basically in the same boat as Lieutenant Sanders on this one. I didn't anticipate this being a question, and I, I'm not aware of calls for service in this area that are related to these types of establishments.
Well, I was thinking, okay, thank you very much. What my concern is, and maybe I should go to, um, well, not, I can't go very many places, can I? Well, I think I'll just look at my dog for a minute. Thank you.
Thank you, President Carter. Alder Furman, questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor, I was hoping to move referral back to ALRC.
Let me just check. Aldo Hilahe, do you have questions for staff?
Yeah, I was going to ask who, thanks, Madam Mayor, who developed the conditions, these five conditions?
Alder, I believe that these conditions are proposed, are potentially proposed by the Alder, and they are relatively standard language that comes onto other licenses from ALRC from time to time. But if we don't have, so we have a number of hands all of a sudden. Alder Furman, I was trying to defer to your colleagues to see if we could get questions answered first. Alder Bedar, questions? No. Alder Skidmore, further questions?
I just, if it's appropriate, I could respond to Alder Furman regarding the five conditions that were added. Four of them are the standard conditions that have been prepared and used in similar situations where sale of small quantities of alcohol and fermented beverages from establishments like this is problematic. Alder Revere, I think, prepared it years ago, so I would defer to him, but this has worked well in similar situations. The fifth, the fifth condition, after talking to the building owner, and I'll address that during discussion, I, I added this so that after about a six-month period, if there are no problems with the license or the establishment, then ALRC could hold another hearing and the conditions could be altered, which is also our, have been our practice. So that's the genesis of the conditions.
Thank you, Alder Skidmore. All right. Now Alder Furman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to refer this back to ALRC.
It's a motion to refer to ALRC, and President Carter will second. So now the motion before us is referral to ALRC. Is there discussion?
Mayor, can I speak to my motion, please?
Please, Alder Furman.
Thank you. So Alder Carter had some questions about, for, for the police department, and they weren't able to answer that this evening. So I think that's definitely one reason to refer this back. But the thing that I heard pretty strongly from the applicant is that they're not interested in going ahead with conditions. I think it would probably be most appropriate that these conditions be spoken about more at ALRC, and they can have a much better discussion compared to here, to figure out whether or not this is something that can work for them. So I just think at this point, it's most appropriate for it to go back there, figure, get figured out, and come back to us with, with more clarity. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Is there further discussion on the motion to refer? Seeing none, is there objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of referral of item nine back to the ALRC. And we'll go on to item number 10, which is Legis 63493. We'll open a public hearing on a new license at Sees Liquor. We have one registrant, Kanhi Alal, of Talc Trail, in support, wishing to speak.
Yes, everyone, my name is Kanhi Alal, and I'm the, the new owner of Seven Seas Liquor. And prior to, I have a two-store, one in North Sherman Avenue, 2801, and one in the Marshall. So I'm seeking a new license for 1763 Terry Road. If anybody have a question, I'm happy to answer regardless of license.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our registrant? Alder Balde.
Thank you, Mayor. Not necessarily question, but I wanted Alal to speak to some of the security measures that he will undertake at this location. I had a lengthy conversation with him and the property owner, but I just wanted it to be on record also as to what he's going to do to make sure that this is not adding to some of the challenges that I'm already, already dealing with at this location.
Absolutely, Mr. Sam. Well, like prior we speak, the last meeting, and before that also when I speak to you and the captain, I'm providing eight cameras for outside, for the parking lot, and being the hallway that I have in the store, it will be 24-hour monitor and facing a 24- to 48-inch monitor facing to the parking lot. So that would eliminate the most of the problem that probably maybe they have there, like I have, I had in the North Sherman Avenue, 2801, when I bought this place. I had the challenges in the beginning with panhandler and homeless people. And I have to put the security cameras out there. So pretty much it's just limited by yourself, because psychologically, anybody want to stand outside, ask for money, or do any kind of unnecessary activity, they have to see themselves on a monitor, and they will definitely think a million times before they do commit or anything. So it helps me a lot in the North Sherman Avenue. Probably 90% don't have no issue at all. That's what I'm proposing to the, to the site, and also including additional 16 camera inside the store, which is angled every single way and every single corner. It will cover with high-def cameras will help to the shopping center to improvement, which is right now, none of the tenants in the shopping center have the, the actual, the high-def cameras outside. Matter of fact, they don't even have anything out there. So I'm proposing that. So it will help to the shopping center. We eliminated a lot of issues, which is I heard they have already now. So I'm fully confident prior to my store that I have right now, and I know I can handle these issues very easily without having any challenges.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for our registrant? Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. President Carter?
Move to grant with conditions?
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant with conditions. Any questions or discussion? Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Alder Lemer.
Thank you. I just had a question slash a discussion item. So I saw in the documents, you know, along with the agenda, that the captain for the area and the Alder had originally opposed this license, but it looks like that was resolved with the items that the owner is intending to put in place with these cameras. I'm wondering if the Alder can confirm that.
Yep. So like I said, I had a very lengthy conversation with Alal and also the property owner. As you may note, there are a lot of challenges around this part of the city. And so I wanted to make sure that if a new liquor license is to be granted, that, you know, at least we are taking some measures to prevent the possibility of escalating those problems. And so Alal has been very, very responsive, and he sounds very responsible with his other businesses. My concerns and that of the captain has not changed much yet, and I told him that, that what is going to happen is I'm going to pay attention to the activities around his location, and if there are any problems, then I'll follow up with him to make sure that they are either addressed or his license is revoked. I made that very clear to him. So but for now, yes, he did, you know, promised to address some of the concerns like he described.
Okay.
But thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Alders. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, then is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of granting the license with conditions? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote on item 10, and move to item number 11, which is Legis 63494. We'll open a public hearing on a new license for IO Arcade Bar. We have no registrants on item 11, so we will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Yes, move to adoption, move to grant with conditions.
Second to conditions.
Moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of granting with conditions. Brings us back to the report of the Plan Commission, and item 12, which is Legis 63436. We'll open a public hearing on amending sections of the MGO to replace, amend and replace maps for wells and repeal some sections of the MGO. We have no registrants on item 12, so we'll close that public hearing. President Carter?
Move to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 12. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we will record that vote. Brings us to item 13, Legis 63441. We'll open a public hearing on creating sections of the MGO to change the zoning of properties at 5501 Mineral Point Road and 425 through 441 Charmaine Drive. We have several registrants on item 13, available to answer questions, all in support. Elizabeth Adler of Milwaukee, representing the Mandel Group, Aaron Olver of Charmaine Drive, representing University Research Park, Robert Manat of Milwaukee, representing Mandel Group, Paul Munch of Pickford Street, representing University Research Park, and Quinn Lynn Perkey of Charmaine Drive, representing University Research Park, all again in support and available to answer questions. Are there questions for any of those registrants on item 13? questions. Are there questions for any of those registrants on item 13? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on item 13. President Carter?
Move to adopt with conditions.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 13 with conditions. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that will be recorded. Brings us to item 14, which is Legis. 63443. We'll open a public hearing on creating sections of the MGO to amend a planned development district and approve an amended general development plan at 701 Gardner Road and 4716 Sheboygan Avenue. On item 14, we have registrants available to answer questions. All in support. Sean Roberts of Milwaukee, representing Summit Smith Development; Tracy Layman of Atlanta, Georgia, representing Kim Lee Horn; Craig Pride of Chicago, representing KTGY Group; Ethan Skeels of Milwaukee, representing Collar Slater; Demetrios Stavrianos of Chicago, also representing KTGY Architects and Planners; Sean Zimny of Chicago, representing Gilbane Development Company; and Kevin Yeska of Verona, representing JSD Professional Services. On item 14, are there any questions for any of those registrants? Seeing none, we will close that public hearing. President Carter?
Move to adopt with conditions.
Second to adopt with conditions.
Moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of adopting with conditions. Takes us to item 15, which is Legis. 63457. We'll open a public hearing on a substitute, repealing and recreating subsection entitled Housing Cooperative of the MGO, and amending the definition of housing cooperative. On item 15, we have six registrants in support, some available to answer questions. David Sperer of West Wash, representing the Madison Area Cooperative Housing Alliance; Brell Hutton Oak Palake of Lyndon Ave; Gabrielle Hinahara of Hoboken Road, representing the Madison Area Cooperative Housing Alliance; Paul Scheckter of Dayton Street, representing the Madison Area Cooperative Housing Alliance. All available for questions. Are there any questions for any of our registrants on this item? Seeing none. President Carter?
Move to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing none, we will record a unanimous vote in favor of adoption of item 15. And that, my friends, is the end of our public hearings. Alder Hennick?
Move a 10-minute recess?
Is there a second for a 10-minute recess?
Second.
Moved and seconded to take a 10-minute recess. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of a 10-minute recess? Seeing no objection, we are recessed until 10:33 PM.
We're at ten thirty-three, so I'll ask Alders to come back and turn their cameras back on. And I will ask the clerk to call the roll. And Thomas, you're muted.
Thank you. All right. Alder Bedar.
Present.
Alder Bedar is present. President Carter.
Present.
President Carter is present. Alder Evers.
Here.
Alder Evers is present. Alder Foster.
Here.
Alder Foster is present. Alder Furman.
Present.
Alder Furman is present. Alder Harrington McKinney? I assume Alder Harrington McKinney is excused? Okay. Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Heck is present. Alder Hennick. We can come back. Alder Campbell?
Here.
Alder Campbell is present. Alder Lemer?
Here.
Alder Lemer is present. Alder Martin?
Here.
Alder Martin is present. Alder Presto Giacomo?
Here.
Alder Presto Giacomo is present. Alder Rumel is excused. Alder Skidmore? Alder Skidmore?
Here.
Alder Skidmore is present. Alder Tierney?
Here.
Alder Tierney is present. Alder Verveer?
Here.
Alder Verveer is present. Alder Wahelia?
Here.
Alder Wahelia is present. Alder, or Vice President Abbas?
Yes, here, thank you.
Vice President Abbas is present. Alder Alboraz?
Here.
Alder Alboraz is present. Alder Balday?
I'm here.
Alder Balday is present. Alder Hennick?
Present.
Alder Hennick is present. We have Quorum.
Thank you. It looks like Alder Harrington McKinney is also with us.
Excellent.
I am here.
Thank you, Alder. So we are now on item number forty-three, which is legislative file six-two-six-seven-eight, accepting the final report and recommendations of the President's Work Group to review council communication tools and processes. President Carter?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second? Vice President Abbas will second. Is there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of adoption of item number forty-three, which takes us to item number forty-four. Legislar six-three-two-one-seven, authorizing the mayor and clerk to enter into an MOU with the Center for Black Excellence in Culture and to allocate funds from the Small Business Equity and Recovery Program. We have a number of registrants on item number forty-four. We'll see if they are still with us, starting with Kalim Care of Madison, Fisher Street in Madison, in support, representing One City Schools, to be followed by Dr. Alexander G. Junior.
Can you all see me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, just here, okay. Yeah, well, I just wanted to share that, you know, many of you who are on the council hopefully know that Dr. Alex G. and I had started on this project together a few years ago, and it culminated from a dream that he had, you know, a couple decades ago, wanting to build a cultural center in that space that his church has called home. And over time, he's been able to acquire more and more of that property to where he owns majority of that hill on Badger Road now. But the purpose behind it is that both of us grew up in this community. My family goes back to nineteen oh seven in Madison, and there's never really been a time when we felt like Madison was a place that reflected our home. You know, we grew up here, not many black businesses in our community, there are few, there were fewer for years than there were when we were younger. So we went forward, then we went backwards. So you really just didn't see, have a sense of place or see yourself reflected across the city. While a lot of the good efforts that have been happening over the last five or more years are starting to change that, it's very hard to still, as an African American, find a place for yourself here in this community, number one. Number two, as we try to recruit people here to work in jobs and take on responsibilities in our community, or come to our university and get them to stay here. You know, many of the people who leave say, I do not feel like I belong in Madison, Wisconsin. Third is, there's a history, a deep history of African Americans in this community have contributed a ton to this, this city. And even in two of the books that have been written about Madison's history by two very prominent members, white men, members of our community, they leave very few pages, a few pages to the history of black people in this community. And there's a lot more to write about and share than that. Fourth, our children grew up in this city, black, white, or otherwise, and they have no real understanding of just how deep our history goes back in this city or what we've contributed to it. And at this point in American history, you know, we're, we want to be represented, we want to be reflected in this community's history and its present and its future. But we want our children to build from what we've learned and what we've done here to move forward. So it's critical that this city knows more about who we are, what we contribute, and to give ourselves a place to grow and build from. So the African American Center for Cultural Advancement would do that. And there are many cultural centers in this city, whether they're called cultural centers or not. There's the Overture Center, there's Jewish Community Center, I would even say the Cole Center, and Camp Randall are cultural centers. If you participate in that sports culture, what you don't see is black culture here in this city. And I would ask anyone, if they think otherwise, where would you go to find it, maybe other than a black church? So we think it's important that City of Madison supports this initiative. One City Schools is no longer a partner organizationally in the effort because we had to peel off, because we have a shorter timeframe to get our school built.
That's three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Dr. Alex G. of Pittsburgh, in support.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the common council. My respect for you has increased. I didn't know you all kept hours like these. But I'm asking the common council to vehemently support the Center for Black Excellence in Culture. My team and I have been listening to the black community lament the reality of the tale of two cities, really, for the past decades, but also the revolving door that's spinning out our young Madison-born black professionals who don't see opportunities for themselves as leaders and role models. They also are mourning the lack of a cultural home that gives us a sense of thriving and to see ourselves in the future. In addition to all of that, we're fighting against the gentrification that's happening in South Madison, that's just obvious, but also a sense of toxicity that, that is contributing to the fact that the stress and the microaggressions for black folks in this community has become social, has become a social determinant of health. But I've also listened to scores of black, of business leaders, because I either consult with them, or they participate in our programs, and they bemoan the lack of a diverse employee pool. And so they are struggling to really diversify their staff and make themselves a world-class organization or business because they can't attract blacks to, to stay, to come and stay in this community. We've always, we've talked about so many of the problems in this community, even ad nauseam, but we got a solution, and it's the Center for Black Excellence in Culture, because it's going to focus on economic development, it's going to focus on business enterprise development, but also it's going to focus on talent attraction and retention through the center as well. The center's going to focus on the creation and enhancing black wealth, black health, black culture, black leadership development, black pride, and again, for a sense of black people to feel like they're really at home. There's momentum among black leaders and influencers. We've talked to over a hundred black influencers, two hundred in the last two years. We are mobilizing within the white business community, the broader business community, because they see this as a way of attracting and retaining people to our community. We don't want to lose that sense of momentum. Building businesses is very important, but it's not the lack of businesses alone that's making life difficult in Madison. It's the lack, the lack of infrastructure, cultural home that says that we belong here. And the center will create that. It'll, it'll create a draw of tens of thousands of people, as this will be a regional hub, so it will draw more traffic and more business into South Madison. But it'll be a place where we will develop leaders, and leaders can, and black business leaders can not only focus on traditional businesses, but even business, creative businesses, business in the arts, how to be an artist as a business, how to create a podcast. And so we're working to build a strong infrastructure so even more black businesses can thrive. But business owners are lacking a cultural hub that allows them to feel rooted and connected in this community. And so I would ask you all to support this, because I believe that it does meet the goals of, of the proposed fund that this would come from, because this is definitely a way of not only strengthening black businesses, but creating a sense of home so that black businesses want to be here and can thrive. I'm also joined by my project manager, Jim Bauer, who can help us answer, who can help us in asking or answering any direct questions. And we are building. Okay, thank you.
Will do.
Thank you. We have a number of other folks available to answer questions. Denise Thornton Mageli of Midvale Boulevard in support, Dave Mack of West Washington in support, Anthony Ward of Mansion Hill Ave in support, Harry Hawkins of Oregon, Wisconsin in support, representing Nehemiah Community Development Corporation, Jim Bauer of Baldwin Street in support. And we have a total of two hundred and fifteen registrants in support, the rest not wishing to speak. Do we have questions for any of our registrants? Alder Balday?
Thank you, Mayor. So my question is to Kalim. So as you may know, this is Samba. You know, I think this cultural center is way overdue, but I also know that the recent immigrants from Africa in the city of Madison and Sun Prairie and the surrounding areas is, is really growing. I wanted you to speak to your, you know, vision for how to help, you know, working with this community, but also your ancestry home in Africa.
Yeah, thank you for sharing, thank you for asking that question. We talked about this, and I won't say a lot, because it didn't need much conversation, but we did want to bring it up, that this is about the diaspora of African people from around the world, being here in America, growing up here, giving to this country in many ways. And so we want the diaspora of our community to be reflected here, to be able to utilize this center, to be able to see themselves in the center. Because even though, you know, Alder Balday, you've been here for some years now, we have African community members who've been here longer than me, you know, and they've contributed a lot to this city. Rose Onama, I could think of another people, number of people, and they deserve to not only be mentioned in a center like this, but to see themselves there and their children there, and this community should be able to see them. So absolutely, this will reflect the diaspora of our community.
The second question and final maybe is that, you know, how much does this play to the aggregate of the cost, I mean, in terms of this project? I mean, I know two hundred can sound like a lot of money, but I'm just wanting to know if this was to go through, how far does this take the project forward in terms of finances?
Pastor G. has more of the current knowledge on the project, but I doubt it's changed a lot. You know, this is going to be somewhere in a neighborhood of, you know, twenty, twenty-five million. And a project like this requires that. And so it's a nominal amount. However, there's a lot of pre-development costs that this project is going to endure. And two hundred fifty thousand will go a long way towards that. So we don't want the city to think support, it's enough to support right now. But there will be additional resources that will need it, be needed going forward. But we're going to be reaching out to a broad network of people to help continue to drive support towards this project. And that's already started. It's already started.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. President Carter? You're muted, President Carter.
Okay. This is for Alex G. When you talked about reaching out to the community, can you discuss that a little bit more in detail, and some of the things that the community was saying that is needed, and especially the small businesses that you reached out to?
Sure, sure. A set number of things. One, if I just may just back up for just a split second, Alder, and just say, can you all hear me all right?
Yes.
The focus of our name moved from the African American Center to the Black Center, the Center of Black Excellence in Culture, to, to address the issues that Alder Balday was, was bringing up. And so as such, we've been listening to members of what we're calling the Pan-African community, folks who are of African descent, Caribbean blacks, Afro-Latinos, and North American blacks. And we have probably had a dozen listening sessions totaling over a hundred people, black physicians, black business owners, black, black elders, black born Madisonians. And so we've been very strategic, and this has happened in the last several months, but we've been listening to sobrieties and fraternities and church leaders for the past two years. What people are saying is that, that not only do they need the resources for starting businesses, but a stronger sense of community, a place to go to, to start your business, workspace, a space to meet with others, to talk about everything from chart of accounts to your web design, to your trademarking, that type of care and walking them into business ownership, but then also being within a community of folks, being, being developed as a leader, to be able to move and handle these businesses. So it's not just the technical aspect of it, but it's the cultural, it's the communal part of it. It's working with people that are doing it so that you have role models. Well, one of the things that really has impeded the greater growth among black leadership, of black business leadership, is the lack of role models. That once you see people doing it, and in this space, you can walk shoulder to shoulder, work shoulder to shoulder with them. And because of our experience convening unique groups of planning, we will bring the professionals in to rub shoulders with these businesses and help to develop and grow them. And again, not just your traditional businesses, but artists who want to be business owners, and social entrepreneurs. I run a nonprofit, so I'm not necessarily considered broadly as a business person, but I've created four social enterprises in this community that have stood for decades. And so, but I was nurtured by leaders in this community in a real informal way. We're wanting to bring all of that together so that individuals can go for concept, to workspace, to actually renting out suites and spaces to, to run their businesses. And, and the, and the reason why we are still finalizing the pre-development parts of this is because we do not assume that we know everything that's needed. And so we are listening very intently about the kinds of space, what moms are telling us, what business leaders are telling us, what doctors are telling us. It has really been helpful. We have over twenty African Americans, key African Americans, who are a part of our advisory council. And so we are listening so that when we speak, we're speaking with a very broad voice of the black community, and not just that of two or three people.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, President Carter. Alder Wihilehi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Kalim, and thank you, Dr. G., for this initiative. It's a well-needed project. You know, I've lived in Madison for over thirty years and always felt an outsider. So I think this center will be really key to our growth for our families, our kids, and all, all of our, you know, black families. But a couple of questions I have is, you know, you've talked about a lot about economic development, employment development, social entrepreneurship, and all that. Will that, will you be collaborating with the Black Chamber of Commerce, or is this another duplicate of what the Black Chamber of Commerce is doing? And the other question I have is, you know, you talked about having twenty-five African American in the advisory council. Have you reached out to the African immigrants to be part of this, the center, as it relates to all, you know, African diaspora? Thank you.
You know, I see they unmuted me. Yes, we have, we've been doing, we started that over a, maybe a year and a half, two years.
And I'd like to jump in on that specifically, too.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, go ahead. I mean, you can go ahead, but we have, you know, we've reached out, we've had Songolos, there's a number of people, I don't want to name drop, but we have talked to people who've been here for a while about it, and they've been very supportive. But they did want to see a reflection of themselves in the center.
That's, no, that's right, Kalim. Thank you. And Alder, I'll also add that, yes, not only have we reached out, but we have members of, of the African community who are in our listening sessions and on my advisory council, because we're very sincere about doing this. Part of this came from a trip that my family took a year and a half ago to West Africa, and it was a part of the sixteen, year of return, four hundred years after the sixteen-nineteen slave trade. And it hit me that the message of resilience, the honor with which African Americans, American blacks, were received, and we were told of our ancestry, and that we are the descendants of the strongest of the strong, and that we are resilient. It made me realize that that has not been a part of, of my story, or the way the black experiences is really talked about in Madison. And so we came back, my family came back, and we said, resilience has got to be a part of this story, and we've got to build bridges within the African diaspora. And so we started listening to people, again, folks from Afro-Latino community, from the African community, will you advise us, will you, will you be a part of the team, will you stand with us? So that piece has been, has been very important. I'm trying to think about, I'm sorry, I'm trying to remember your second question. We will work with the, we will work with the Black Chamber. Again, this, this pre-development piece is key because it takes time to, to get to folks, but yes, we will do that. But there's also a performance part. There's a part where we want to be able to celebrate our culture, our music, we want to bring performances, we want to bring lecturers. We're working with folks like the Frank family, who has a lot of experience in performance space, advising us on how do we build space so that this is, this becomes a cultural structure, and a, and a cult, and a civic gathering place, the way Overture, Mimoka, and others have enhanced the quality of life in Madison for us all. This will do this as well. It will be regional, it is not, is not a South Madison, or even a South Central Wisconsin thing. We're working with Lord Cultural Resources. It's a group out east that has advised nearly two thousand cultural centers, including the Smithsonian History, Black History Museum. And so they're helping us with our development plan, so that it's very solid, and it helps to enhance the, the, the cultural life of this community. But it also helps to broaden the black footprint by bringing us together and allowing us to learn from various aspects of, of black culture throughout the black, the African diaspora. And that's really important to us. That's something that I didn't know growing up. And there's been quite a gap that's there. So we see this as being very therapeutic, very healing. And then as we come together and build and share our cultural identities, we invite the broader community in so that we shape the narrative of who we are, where we've come from, and what we can do, and not just look at what's pejorative, but look at what's our strength. And the sessions have been, have been phenomenal.
Yeah, I just want to add that it's also important, and we've talked about this, that our history does not start with slavery. And that's where our history begins in this country. And we do not want our children to understand or believe that that's who they are, and that is where they came from. Because that is like Pastor G. said, that is what we were taught when we were children. Our history and our history books started with, we were slaves, we were servants. And our history goes back much further than that. So our connection to the diaspora is really, really critical. And knowing that we have people in our community who represent that they grew up in our homeland, we have to work together. And so you will see that reflected in the planning and in the ultimate product of this, this center.
And we don't want white children to think that our history started
That's right.
with slavery. And so we're already having a talk with educators, principals, about how this will become a place where schools will come for field trips to learn about the contributions of blacks in this, in this state and in this area. And the center will also be a place where jobs will be created. And it will definitely offset the level of toxicity that's been experienced in this community. I personally feel, my team feels that this is one of the best efforts we have of not only developing black enterprise, but eliminating the, the factors, culture, resource, and otherwise, that have impeded this kind of growth. We want this to be a place where blacks are attracted and where they are retained, because that's the only way we're going to become a true diverse community.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Any other questions for our registrants? All right, seeing none. Thank you both. And President Carter, I believe we need a motion.
Move adoption.
Uh, moved and seconded to adopt. There are questions for staff? Or discussion? Uh, President Carter, questions for staff?
Yes, I have a question for, starting out with Dave Semidiki.
Go ahead, Alder.
Uh, oh, hi, Dave. My question to you is, it's a two-part question. One is, um, regarding our budget and where we are to the levy.
Um, Alder, Carter, um, the budget, uh, reference to the levy, uh, what's before you in this, um, resolution would not affect the levy or the levy limit? The levy's already been set for 2021, and, um, we were, I think, within about thirty thousand dollars or so of the, um, of the levy limit, but what's before you is borrowing, which does not, um, affect the levy limit.
And I was going to get to that. And so what are the, um, the impact of borrowing, um, considering what we've done thus far with borrowing and what is coming due?
Um, well, what's in the 2021 adopted capital budget is, um, a little under a hundred and twenty-one million dollars of new general obligation borrowing. And, um, um, so that's pretty similar to what we've had in prior years, um, somewhat less, and, um, that probably will not all be issued in 2021, as, as we talked about and, um, as we've discussed the budget, projects tend to not get done, perhaps on the timetable in the budget, and so that issuance may occur over the next couple of years. Obviously, we then have to pay that, that debt back with debt service, um, from the general fund and other funds. And we typically look at as one measurement of debt service is, um, that ratio of general fund debt service to the general fund budget. And right now, that's at about, uh, seventeen percent or so, and, um, will probably rise a little bit with what's in the capital budget and capital improvement plan, but, um, uh, is relatively, you know, is moderating, uh, at that level. Again, what's before you, um, is about a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar increase to the, um, capital budget, at least in the alternate. And, um, so that's a, as you can imagine, is a very small, uh, share of, um, the total capital budget that, um, the council adopted back in November for 2021.
Okay, thank you. And is, um, Matt Majeski, is he here tonight?
Yes, Alder, I'm here.
Uh, thank you, Matt. Can you tell me what was discussed at the, um, EDC regarding funding for this project?
Sure. Um, the resolution that was presented to the EDC was the original, uh, resolution, not the alternate. And so the original resolution, uh, called for utilizing two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the Small Business Equity and Recovery Program. Uh, the EDC had a discussion about the center, uh, also a discussion about the status of the SBER program, and, uh, they voted to support, uh, the original resolution.
Okay, thank you. And then can, um, Matt, can you talk about, um, any federal dollars that might be coming our way to go into this SBER? Or do I need to call on someone else?
Uh, I mean, I'm
That's like, don't call on me. Don't call on me, I hear you. Um, okay, thank you.
Uh, President Carter, I, I think, as I mentioned at CCEC, um, we are not at, at this moment in time expecting, um, federal, direct federal aid, um, for economic development or anything else, but President Biden's rescue package does contain direct federal, federal aid, uh, for states and cities, uh, and it also contains additional funding for small business support. Um, so we, we're sort of waiting congressional action there to see if, if that comes through. Um, I think it's also important to note that there are currently, uh, the, the Paycheck Protection Act has been extended at the federal level, and that's available to small businesses. There's also, uh, state funding available to small businesses in addition to county funding through Dane by Local. And so there's a number of, of supports for small businesses out there that are currently available.
Thank you.
Are there other questions for staff? If not, discussion, Alder Kimball.
I would like to move the alternate.
Alder Kimball moves an alternate, is there a second? Alder Foster will second. Alder Kimball, do you should speak to the motion?
Yes, um, I do, and, you know, I may ask Matt Micklajewski to, to come back and relay, um, some of the data he and he, his staff, uh, gave us about this program at the Economic Development Committee meeting. So the alternate, um, basically bar adds an additional two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to SBER, um, so that, uh, the Center for Black Excellence and Culture is funded to the amount that we want to fund it, and so that the entire two-point-five-million dollars that the SBER was originally, um, formed in for, for, for 2021 goes for, um, those purposes. So I think it's really important to support the Center for Black Excellence and Culture, and it's also really important to support the small businesses owned by people of color, uh, that are really struggling with the effects of COVID-19 to the fullest extent possible. And when we created this fund last summer, um, we recognized how much support they needed. Well, at the Economic Development Committee meeting, the first item on our agenda was a report from Zach Brandon and the Chamber of Commerce on how small businesses are doing. Um, and his report, um, he talked about, specifically about businesses of color that were struggling, and, and an alarming number of which would go out of business within several months if they didn't get extra support. So this SBER was specifically, um, made to help these small businesses weather the pandemic. And, you know, there are nine different aspects to this, um, several grant programs, um, a business-ready program, a program that would help businesses transition to online marketing, um, financial support to the, the, uh, the Black and Latino and Mung Chambers of Commerce, um, to do outreach on that. And, um, I asked, um, Director Micklajewski to bring us some budget numbers, um, to, to look at, you know, how much, if we fully funded all of the grant applications for, for these five-to-ten-thousand-dollar grants, um, that support, uh, businesses to make space modifications, help them up, out with PPE, make their spaces safe for, um, COVID, um, COVID times, uh, you know, retail during COVID times. Um, first of all, what were the, what were the, uh, what was the demand based on how many applications we've received, and then how would that budget pan out? And so we got numbers from, um, Ruth Rollick that said, basically, the way things were panning out, that the entire two-point-five-million might be taken up, could be taken up, just by applications to that one grant program alone, and that's one out, out of nine things that we wanted this program to do. And then Matt showed us a budget saying, well, okay, if, if we, if we did it that way, um, then we wouldn't be able to fund any of these, the other aspects of the program, or we could not fund everyone who's requesting and cut off applications and only, you know, spend about one-point-eight-million on that and then allocate some money to these other, um, programs. So I, I just think we should do as much as we can to meet that demand of the needs of the, the already existing businesses, for them to just weather the next three or six months until we might open up again, back to, to more or less, you know, in-person commerce. It's a critical point in time for these businesses to be able to, um, to, to just stick it out. So, um, my amendment, um, is made after, um, talking with the mayor about, um, you know, what could we do, could we find some other money? She had told me that, you know, finances wa, was, they're closing their books on 2020, but the final numbers won't be done until the end of the month, and we may find some, um, some extra money there, we don't know. Um, and so I offer this amendment as sort of, uh, an insurance that if we don't find more money, at least, um, we can borrow to be able to fund the Center for Black Excellence and Culture, um, and fully fund SBER. And if we do, um, find more money, we don't have to borrow this much. As, as Director Schmidiki told us, you know, we have a hundred and twenty-one million in geo-borrowing authorized for this year, but we're not going to use it all this year. So this is just a little bit of insurance, um, to make sure that we deliver on our promises to everyone. And I hope, um, you'll support the alternate. There's nothing changed in the language other than adding two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in geo-borrowing. Otherwise, the, the resolution is exactly the same.
Thank you, Alder. I'm going to call on you next, Alder Harrington-McKinney, but in the meantime, I have to ask Alder Carter to take the chair because my computer is going to restart itself yet again. It seems like we are on schedule to do this every single council meeting, so Alder Harrington-McKinney.
Um, um, I want to go back and ask, um, a question of Matt in terms of, of the purpose of the black, and I know that I can't call, um, uh, um, Dr. G back for a conversation because now we're on staff questions and we are into, uh, the alternate, is that correct? I want to make sure that I am inside of what protocol is. Um, and what I'm, what I'm aiming at is, is that the intent of the funding that the Black Excellence, um, uh, Black Excellence cultural, what is the, okay, Matt, are you there? Because I'm, 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 I'm kind of, uh, of looking for you to give me some direction.
Yes, Alder, I'm, I'm here.
Okay, all right. Um, so walk alongside of me, the purpose of the side to support black businesses was what? What, what was the intent, the purpose, please?
The, the purpose of the Small Business Equity and Recovery Program or the purpose for the Center for Black Excellence?
Okay, are they different?
Yes, they're, they're, the, the SBER program is a, a city program that, that's very broadly looking at, uh, equitable recovery, both in the short term and the long term, and then the, the Center for Black Excellence is, is a private project, uh, being led by Dr. G.
Okay, and you have looked thoroughly at both of these separate projects, is that correct? Yes or no?
Yes, the, the, although the, the funding for the center at this point is, is for their, their pre-development costs, so it, it's, it's the expenses that they need to assume to get to the point where, where there's a, a thorough, um, model for the center.
Okay, and with the consideration of using some of those fundings to get to them, get them to the, um, pre-designated space, is this funding that can be used, uh, from the SBERC, is that appropriate use for it?
So the, the, as Alder Kimball indicated before, the SBER program had a series of initiatives that were proposed, uh, that were both, uh, looked at immediate response to the challenge of COVID and also long-term recovery. Uh, the last item, uh, within the ordinance that was passed by the council, uh, had a statement to the effect of other, uh, projects that become apparent, uh, that the council desires to fund. Um, and, uh, we, we kept kind of that vague statement in there, knowing that there was likely going to be opportunities that we were going to have as a community over the next couple of years, uh, that we may choose to, to use, uh, SBER funds, uh, to support. And, and this is one of those initiatives, uh, by supporting, uh, both black entrepreneurship, but also supporting, uh, black professionals within our community, uh, it does fit within that, that broader SBER purpose.
Okay, um, and as, um, um, Kalim and also, uh, Dr. G talked about the diaspora and really building up black excellence, excellence and black pride and, um, preserving black drain, I mean, this is something that, um, um, uh, set us apart in really making a commitment to what black excellence mean. I mean, often, it would be great if we would have enough money to support all of the businesses that were struggling, but obviously, we don't have enough money to do that. Um, but to make a commitment for the city to say that we, and, and we hear it all the, uh, the time, um, um, you know, how important Black, Black pride is, and so to have a center of e, excellence, is that not an investment that the city would want to pursue? I'm asking.
Alder, I mean, I think that's, that's the question before the, the council this evening as, as to whether or not the, the council wishes to make that investment.
Okay, okay. And whether we have the choice of borrowing against it, or supporting it out of the funds that are already set aside, we have the choice to do that, is that correct? Is that, that's what's before us tonight?
Yes, the, 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 the initial, uh, resolution would have, uh, used, uh, funds, uh, that were already in the SBER budget, and the alternate that Alder Kimball is proposing would add an additional two-thousand dollars to, uh, the SBER program for this purpose.
Okay, and I guess I'm not following then why the substitute. I was looking at the, um, what was before and presented by Alder Carter, but I'm not really, I'm not really crystal clear about how the alternate will achieve the same thing of why the alternate. I guess that's what I'm asking for you to help me to process through.
Sure. Both, both, the primary resolution and the alternate would both provide funding, uh, the same amount of funding, uh, to the Center for Black Excellence to do the same exact thing. Uh, all that, uh, the alternate does that Alder Kimball has put forth is to increase the SBER budget by two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, uh, such that, along with providing the center with two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, our, our budget for the SBER program is at the same time increased by two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for that purpose.
And that's through the borrowing mechanism?
Yes.
Okay, um, and the original would, would be, would offer the same mechanism, but it wouldn't, would not be through the city doing the ge, geo-borrowing. Is that my understanding?
Uh, Dave?
I, um, uh, Alder Harrington-McKinney, I just, and, uh, the rest of the council, I just want to make clear that the funding for the SBER program that's in the 2021 budget is two-point-five-million of that's in the 2021 budget is 2.5 million of GEO borrowing. So the grants that will be provided through the Small Business Equity and Recovery Program, the two and a half million that's been authorized will be funded from GEO borrowing. What this alternate does is increase that two and a half million to $2,750,000 and so that there's an additional amount to fund this proposed amount for the center. What had been originally proposed is that the funding for the center would come out of the original 2.5 million of GEO borrowing.
Okay, I'll hold my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Vice President Abbas.
Thank you. Question for David Schmidicki. So from my understanding, this 250,000 extra for GEO borrowing, how far we can go? Can we put $500,000, 1 million, 2 million? What is the limit? Like, how we came across this 250?
I can't speak to the 250. My understanding is that was the amount decided to be provided to the center. I think you probably want to direct that question to Matt or the authors of the resolution on how that amount was determined.
No, I'm not, sorry, late. I'm not asking that. So what I'm saying is this, 2.5 million is there and 250,000 they ask. Alder Campbell increased that 2.5 to sorry, what was the amount? Gosh. Yes, 2.75. So my question is, is the extra money Alder Campbell adding GO funding, GO borrow? Can we add more?
Again, it's the council's decision to amend the budget. You've already gone through a budget process where you made decisions on the amount of dollars to allocate, the amount of new GEO to authorize. And, you know, what results from that is that debt has to be repaid. One of the measures that we look at is how much of that debt service the amount relative to the overall general fund budget? That amount has gone up considerably over the last few years as we've had to invest in infrastructure projects. As I said, it was at about 17%. It's probably heading towards 18, 19%. So yes, you can decide to add more debt. When that becomes an issue, you know, is I think that would require a lengthier discussion. But, you know, you've already decided on a budget for 2021 of 120 million dollars. So significant investment. 250,000 is not obviously a large share of an increase, but I think as it would get larger, those considerations of future debt service would become more critical and something that the council would need to consider carefully.
Thank you for that information. And Matt, one quick question for you. Alder Campbell also mentioned about there are hundreds of application and that money is being already, according to staff, will be utilized with existing application. Could you please share some information on that? If that's what I thought, that's the message I got from Alder Campbell.
Sure. So we've received about 600 applications for funding. We've processed close to a third of those. So we're still working through the applications. We project that through February 10th, which is the next application deadline, that we will likely end up spending somewhere between 2.6 million and 3 million on those COVID-related grants. And just by way of background, there's 2.5 million in the 21 budget, but there was also 750,000 in the 20 budget. So the 2.5 plus 750 equals 3.25. So we believe and right now, we're currently planning on pausing the receipt of applications on February 10th. We will believe, again, we believe we will be somewhere between 2.6 and 3 million. I should note, though, just that the reality is that the need is huge within the community. And so I think we have to be honest with ourselves that we as a city are likely not going to have the capacity to meet the need within the business community. And, you know, hopefully, by coupling SBER with PPP, with the Dane County Program, with other programs, you know, businesses can, you know, have some assistance until they're able to reopen. But the reality is that we are not going to be able to fully meet the demand that's out there because the demand is huge.
So you're absolutely right. The demand is really high and everybody need help. It's understandable. So with the original resolution, if that gets passed, it will still, we will be still in 3.25 million. We're not going above. Okay.
Correct.
Correct.
Under the original resolution, yes, that's correct.
And within a budget? Approved budget, which we approved.
Yes, so I think that with the original budget that was approved for the SBER program, I believe that we'll be able to fund all of the COVID grant applications that we received through February 10th. We will be able to provide 250,000 to the Black Center and we will hopefully have some additional resources to do some of the other initiatives outlined in the SBER program guidelines.
Perfect, thanks. No more question.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney, did you have an additional question or is your hand still up? Alder, I'm going to assume that your hand was just left up from the last time and go to President Carter?
Yes, this is for Dave again. You said there was the 2.5 million dollars in the SBER program is GEO borrowing?
Yes, what's authorized in the 2021 budget is 2.5 million of GEO borrowing.
And we, in the 2021 budget total, we have 121 million in GEO borrowing?
That's correct.
And you stated that some of the projects will not be completed in 2021?
As we see in every budget, the budget authorizes a certain amount of borrowing. In this case, it'll be 120 million. Projects just, we won't issue all of that authorized borrowing in 2021 just because these projects tend to be multi-year, may take time for them to get completed. And, you know, we may not need to borrow to finance the project until the subsequent year. That happens every year with every budget.
Right, so is there any reason why we could not with the projects going the way you just described? Is there any reason why we cannot redistribute the money to the SBER?
I want to be clear that when I say it won't all be used, that just means it won't be issued this year. It'll still be needed to fund the program. So that's a difference between the timing of issuing the debt and if the debt will ultimately be needed. We don't know that yet until we actually go through the projects. So to say that there may be excess at some point, but we don't know what that is right now. So if you want to be able to have the authority to spend this money, you need to make the appropriation or not. I mean, that's the issue that's before you. You're either going to allocate it from the 2.5 million you've already approved or you can expand the appropriation by 250,000 so that there's additional dollars there for other parts of the program besides the center.
Is there any reason why we could not do a budget amendment in the near future for GEO borrowing for the SBER program? To increase the amount?
Again, that's the council's decision if it wants to amend the budget at some future meeting.
Alder McKinney, you are now muted. Thank you.
Any other questions, President Carter?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Alder Balday.
Thank you, Mayor. So David, how often after a budget is done, do you go back to amend in terms of borrowing again?
There are times throughout the year that the council has amended either the operating, typically not the operating budget, general fund, but capital budget might be amended at different points during the year. I don't have that data in front of me, but I know that in every year, we have at least a few amendments to the capital budget.
So earlier, I think you indicated that you probably will not borrow all this money now against the end of the year. And every year, we go through this budget process. So is there any need really to then? I mean, even if we say, for example, we approve this amendment and say we are going to borrow an additional 250, at the end of the year, we may not even borrow that 250. Is that true?
It's possible. I doubt it, given the what, you know, Matt Mikludzewski described in terms of interest in the program and the pace at which those dollars will go out. It probably would be an expectation that that would be borrowed sometime this year. But I just want to repeat what I said before, which is in order to have the authority to allocate these dollars, you have to, you know, either allocate it from the existing 2.5 million, if that's what the council so decides, or if you want to expand it, you know, there will be implications. You have to authorize the dollars and affect appropriate them. The timing of when the borrowing occurs is a cash issue. And so you have to have that authority to spend in order to actually allocate the dollars for this, you know, this activity, the center in this case, or other activities. So I just want to go back to say that if you want to expand the pool of dollars for SBER so that this, the center is in addition to that two and a half million, you really need to do that at this point in time if that's, if you want to award that funding soon because you need to have those dollars appropriated. The timing of when the borrowing occurs, you know, may, you know, may result, you know, it may happen in future years, but you have to have the appropriation in the first place to have the authority to spend.
Does this have any impact on our rating or no?
$250,000 is not going to have any impact on our bond rating.
So Matt, did you say from the money that you have and the applications you've received, there shouldn't be an issue if we were to pass the original resolution? Is that true or no?
So again, assuming we stop receiving applications on February 10th, we think that we will receive between or we will spend between 2.6 and 3 million of the 3.25 million that we have between 2020 and 2021. So if we hit the max, we still have funding for the center. If come in under, we still have money available to do other aspects of the SBER program. And that's the challenge that we have at this moment is that we haven't finished processing all of the applications. Some of the applications are denied for some reason or another. And, you know, until we get through all of them, we won't know exactly what the dollar value is.
So why is the date February 10? Is that, why is that? Why not April or May or June?
Sure. We, so when we set up the program, we had a deadline of the 10th of every month. So November 10th, December, January, and February. We were putting a pause on receiving applications February 10th because we do feel that we're getting in a position where we may exhaust all of the money that we have the authority for. And we don't want to have business owners go through all the time to pull the application materials if we know that we don't have resources there. What we'll probably do is we'll probably keep open an ability for individuals that are still interested in the program to just submit the business name and their email. And if, for example, we do, through one program or another, get some federal support that we have additional funding available, then we at least have a pool that we can go to. But we don't think it's fair to keep accepting applications if we think we're going to run out of money.
Okay, sounds good. So last question. So my understanding of all this is that if you go by the original resolution, the applicants, you know, up to February 10, will still be, you'll be able to service them and also be able to fund the $250,000 that we are talking about right now and still have some little part of money left. Is that true or no?
Yes, that's where it will end.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. President Carter, additional questions for staff?
No, I call the question.
Thank you. I have no other Alders in the queue for questions. So we don't need to have a formal vote on the call of the question if there is no objection to moving to a vote at this point in time. Seeing no objection. I will remind us, however, that because this is amending the budget, it is a 15-vote item. So 15 ayes are required for passage of the alternate. Is there objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the alternate?
Roll call.
Roll call has been requested. All those in favor of the alternate, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called and the clerk will call the roll.
Alder Biedar?
Aye.
Aye, Alder, or President Carter?
Come back to me.
Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Foster?
Aye.
Alder Foster's aye. Alder Furman?
Aye.
Alder Furman, aye. Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
Alder Harrington McKinney, no. Alder Heck?
Aye.
Alder Heck, aye. Alder Henneck?
Aye.
Alder Henneck, aye. Alder Campbell?
Aye.
Alder Campbell, aye. Alder Lummer?
Aye.
Alder Lummer, aye. Alder Martin?
Aye.
Alder Martin, aye. Alder Prestajakmo, my apologies.
Aye.
Alder Prestajakmo, aye. Alder Rumel is excused. Alder Skidmore?
Aye.
Alder Skidmore, aye. Alder Tierney?
You come back to me, please.
Certainly. Alder Verveer?
Aye.
Alder Verveer, aye. Alder Wehle? Alder Wahalia?
Aye.
Alder Wahalia, aye. Alder, Vice President Abbas?
Aye.
Vice President Abbas, aye. Alder Alboroz?
Aye.
Alder Alboroz, aye. Alder Balday?
No.
Alder Balday, no. President Carter?
Aye.
President Carter, aye. And Alder Tierney?
Aye.
Alder Tierney, aye. 17, aye, two, no?
Thank you. With 17 ayes, the item passes. And that brings us to item number 55, which is Legistar 62957, reconsideration of a new license for Quick Trip Incorporated. President Carter?
Yes, I move to. Yes, I move, I move to, hold on, what number are we on, sorry?
55.
Okay, I was one over, sorry about that. I move to refer
to
the next coming council meeting.
Move to refer to the next coming council meeting, is there a second?
Yes, are we at item 55?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so there's a motion and a second to refer to the next council meeting. We do have, I believe, one of our registrants still here on this item, so we'll offer David Ring of La Crosse, who is here in support, representing Quick Trip, an opportunity to speak with the knowledge that this vote is to refer the item to the next council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Rhodes Conway, members of the City Council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak before you on our liquor license application. Just, I had sent an email to all of the Alders about 6:10 PM before the council meeting, so you have all my written remarks before you, along with the attachments that I referenced in the email. Just first, want to say that our liquor license application meets all of the standards or requirements necessary for approval, which was reflected in the 7-0 vote on December 16, 2020, by the Alcohol License Review Committee to approve our liquor license application. A liquor license is indeed a privilege and not a right, and our company's policies and coworkers' training related to age-restricted products like alcohol and tobacco reflect the respect we have and the responsibility we assume by holding a liquor or tobacco license. This store is applying for a Class A beer and a Class A cider license, which will allow us to only sell beer and cider, not wine or hard liquor, which are the exact same products that were sold by the previous owners of Stop &amp; Go. In short, we are applying for a liquor license to sell the same alcohol products at the same store location with the same store name that has existed in the sassy neighborhood for over 30 years. This is not a new store moving into the area, only different owners who have an established presence in the city of Madison and a strong track record of performance and compliance with respect to liquor and tobacco regulations, along with a documented history of investing in the communities we serve. And to our knowledge, there have not been any issues or problems with police service calls to this store. The issue and concern about alcohol density and the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood have been raised but not documented. Our Class A license application is for off-premise consumption. Our ownership of the store is the only thing that is changing, and none of these concerns were ever raised in the past, to our knowledge, over the past 30 years, the store operated under the previous ownership group. In fact, we are improving the health of the neighborhood through our healthier food options and cleaner store. We have improved the safety of the neighborhood by installing 18 new security cameras, 14 new interior security cameras, and four new exterior cameras, bringing the total number of security cameras to 29. We have also helped improve the welfare of the neighborhood by offering convenient take-home meals, a fresh meat case, daily delivery of fresh products like butter, bread, eggs, milk, salads, and sandwiches, no fee ATM and free compressor service, air compressor service to make sure customers' tires and their vehicles and bicycles are properly and safely inflated. And we will be contributing to the Red Caboose and Affordable Housing Project that will be benefit to the neighborhood, the city of Madison, Stop &amp; Go, and workforce development. With respect to the termination and removal of the full-service post office that was staffed by store employees, not the post office, and the vacation of the tenant in the laundromat adjacent to our store, former owner Andy Bowman and his management team initiated a decision to move the post office and laundromat out of their lease space a year before we took ownership of the company's store. The reason driving this decision was a need for additional space to expand the store and its product offerings. Mr. Bowman was going to speak tonight, but dropped off the call when you heard that the vote was going to be referred, that we will ask him, obviously, to speak at the next council meeting. Regarding the post office, we did have conversations with the postal service about placing a self-service kiosk in our store that would not consume much floor space, but we were informed that those kiosks are proprietary to conventional post office locations.
And that's three minutes?
Okay, and you can read the rest of my testimony in the email, and I appreciate the time and consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the registrant? Seeing none, the motion is to refer to the next council meeting. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing no objection, the item is referred to our next council meeting. Are there any additional items for introduction from the floor? Or any announcements? We'll wish Alder Heck a happy birthday on the 7th. Happy birthday, Alder. And seeing nothing else, Alder Weheli?
I move to adjourn.
President Carter?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned, thank you all, and have a good night.